Call the meeting to order. We'll start by the recitation of the vision statement. Every school will be a thriving school that prepares every student to graduate from high school, college, career, and community ready. We have a recognition resolution tonight. We'd like to recognize Rosa Thompson for her work with Black Girl Magic Program and Conference. So I'm just gonna take a brief moment to read this resolution. So tonight we would like to recognize one of our district's most dedicated and inspirational elementary school teachers, Rosa Thompson. Rosa has been with MMSD since 2008 and continues to create positive change inside and outside of the classroom. We're recognizing her tonight on the heels of the Second Annual Black Girl Magic Conference that she founded and organizes. It's a remarkable event that empowers and profoundly impacts black female students. The Board would like to read the resolution honoring Rosa. Whereas Rosa Thompson, beloved 4th grade Hawthorne Elementary School teacher, is the founder and chief organizer of the Black Girl Magic Conference, held for the second year in a row in May, and has served as the facilitator for the Black Girls Magic Program at Hawthorne Elementary School for the past two years. Whereas Black Girl Magic is synonymous with Black Girl Excellence, and this year's event celebrated and inspired the excellence of more than 400 girls who identify as black, African-American, or biracial in 4th through 8th grade in Madison, and connected them with black female mentors in the Madison community. Whereas Rosa Thompson demonstrates the will and talent to excel above and beyond her required duties as a teacher, and through the energizing transformative events she created, she clearly embraces and embodies the district's goal of black excellence in the strategic framework. Now therefore be it resolved, the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education and the MMSD community recognizes and highly appreciates Rosa Thompson for this unprecedented gift to our district's black girls. Be it further resolved, this statement be permanently imprinted, the Board of Education minutes for the meeting of June 24, 2019. Again, the Board humbly appreciates her dedication to our youth. Your work is very important to many students, families, and community members have witnessed the positive impact that you have and continue to make in so many students' lives. Thank you. All right, that was wonderful. Thank you again, Rosa. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the regular meeting dated March 18, 2019.
Second.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
No.
All right. Motion passes. Next is public appearances. Thank you for signing up in front of the hall. Thank you for helping us keep our aisles clear to ensure safety, and thank you for helping us ensure that every speaker has an opportunity to make their comments. We also want to remind you that because of clear feedback regarding mispronunciation of names, I apologize if I get them wrong, speakers are welcome to speak on any topic at a regular board meeting, but we would like the speakers and audience to know that the board action and conversation is limited to items on our agenda, which means members of the board will not be able to engage in conversation with speakers. We were able to listen carefully. We will take your comments into account in our decision-making and follow-up with you where appropriate. Each speaker is given three minutes to speak. You must be registered to speak and cannot give your remaining time to someone else. The lighting system will turn yellow. Do we have the lighting system? Okay, we don't have a lighting system tonight. Speakers who require language interpretation support in order to speak to the board will be given up to six minutes to speak, which would generally provide sufficient time for an interpreter to convey the speaker's message. Individuals with disabilities who require accommodations in order to register and speak to the board will be granted such accommodation upon request. Other extensions may be granted only by approval of the board. Thank you again for participating in our meeting tonight. And tonight we have forty-something speakers. Forty-five speakers. All right. So actually, you know what? Before we begin, we do have our new student leader here tonight, Anika Sanya. Welcome. We are very happy to have you with us tonight.
Welcome, Anika. Madam President?
Yes.
May I speak?
Sure.
Our student rep already bringing a lot of resources. She's providing Wi-Fi access to many of the board members, so thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Anika. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start with the budget. Public speakers? All right. The first speaker is Kathleen, Catherine Burns. If you could just come up to the podium, thank you.
Hello, my name's Catherine Burns. This is Olivia, my daughter. I'm here to encourage you to approve Cruz's amendment and give teachers the full cost of living increase. I know that you have a lot of budget priorities, but I think teachers should be the top priority, even if it means having to redo a lot of what you've already done in terms of committing yourselves with the budget. When I came tonight, I was looking for my little MTI pin, and I opened my drawer of old pins and found this one that says, "Recall Walker, sign with me." And it reminded me of a story I want to tell you. I was out collecting signatures for the recall, and I know a lot of you were probably at the Capitol during that time too protesting and trying to advocate for public workers, especially teachers. I came to a man who was mowing his lawn and asked if he was the person on my list. Turns out it was his son that I was looking for. He was an older gentleman in front of a big, beautiful house with a big, beautiful lawn. And he proceeded to tell me that as a teacher, I didn't deserve to be making as much as I was and that I should be contributing more, and he agreed with Walker. That my salary should be cut so that I could pay for benefits. And his property taxes were so high, and he wanted me to take a guess at how much he paid for that beautiful house and property taxes. So I did, and I guessed high, and I guessed wrong, and he said, "Oh, no, not quite that much." And I looked at him and I said, "You know, I hear what you're saying, but I will never be able to afford a house like this because I decided to be a teacher." To which, he proceeded to tell me that he had worked hard in school, as though I hadn't. So what I'm trying to say to you is that teachers sacrifice a lot to be part of this profession. They sacrifice a bigger paycheck that they could be making outside of this business with the same level of education, and they do it willingly because they have a calling to do that. But I've seen too many good teachers have to leave the field because that pay is not keeping up with inflation. And I recently had a little expense here, so I'm gonna be needing a pay raise. So I'm really gonna encourage you. I know it's difficult. I know you're gonna have to make some really tough choices, but there is money out there. You can carve it out, and the staff in Madison deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have spoke once before. It has been three months since the first time I was up here. I look much different now because the last time I spoke to you, I didn't have any hair. I was wearing a hat to cover it. My kids have been to several schools in the district, and they have all failed, my kids. I was living in fight or flight and experienced major anxiety pretty much the whole time my kids have been in school. I just pulled my kids out to homeschool them in November and started coming to the school board meetings, hoping that I could give some insight in what my family has experienced. Luckily, I'm white. Luckily, my wife has a good job. And even though we're successful after starting at the bottom with nothing and working our way up for these last 18 years, my money can't buy a safe or good education for my children because they're black. There's not one school in this district right now that I would consider sending my child to. And that's pretty sad because I've been a Madisonian for my whole life. I'm born and raised on the East Side. I've been doing real estate since I was 19. And honestly, I've wanted to move away from here since I was 19. I've stayed because I'm invested in the city. I'm invested in the people I see on a daily basis. And honestly, I don't really care too much about adults because I think most of us are jaded. And I spend my time with kids and for kids. I've realized that my position in the city is to make something better for my children. And if I haven't changed the city somehow to make it a more equitable city for my girls to thrive in, then I haven't done justice to them or any of these other kids sitting in this room right now. The fact of the matter is, you guys offered $360,000 to police to be put into schools around kids who are experiencing extreme anxiety, extreme. And I know this because I'm white and privileged and have money, and I had nowhere to go to pay for support for me or my kids for the last 12 years. And I can't imagine not having money and having to try to have support because I've paid everybody possible to help me, and I was lucky enough to be able to do that. These kids are drowning out here. Spending money on cops is not the answer when you could be spending money to help them. They need help and love and support, not people pointing their finger, like Kalim did the last time he was here, demanding respect from these kids. They need help. Please give it to them. Find the money for support and love, not cops. No cops in schools.
Thank you. Louise Robbins?
My name is Louise Robbins, and I'm a retired UW faculty member, and for many years I was a reading specialist in public schools in Oklahoma. I now am a very proud volunteer at the Simpson Street Free Press, and I come to speak in favor of Nikki Vandermuilen's amendment to support Simpson Street Free Press to the tune of $30,000 this year, and to work on negotiating a suitable plan and relationship between the school district and the Free Press in the future. I think the Free Press makes a lot of difference in a lot of lives. You'll see a few people over here with Simpson Street Free Press t-shirts on, and you'll see Jewel, a proud parent of Simpson Street Free Press folks. And I hope you will be able to join me in supporting this amendment, which has a documented success rate. And I've watched these young people grow for many years now, as a volunteer for probably six years at Simpson Street. I also was a Schools of Hope volunteer and as a reading specialist, I dislike pull-out programs immensely, but I didn't feel that that was a very effective program for me, at least. So I do encourage you to support Simpson Street Free Press and the budget amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Keys?
I want to show you something first before I get into this. These are the magazines that we get at home every month. Can you hear?
No.
How about now?
No.
Do I get to start over? Anyway, these are the magazines that we give at home. Capital City, Hughes, Progressive, Nation, Vanity Fair, Model Railroading, Smithsonian, and dozens of others. But one that we get that is most important to me is the Simpson Street Free Press. It's one of those magazines that I don't put on the coffee table to wait to get to it when I have time. It's the one I grab first, and I tell my wife, "I'm reading this first. This is mine," and I read it straight through because it is such a heck of a good newspaper. Now, when I was a teacher and when I was a member of the Board of Education, I went to the Free Press working spot twice, and each time I went there, I saw kids working very hard on their work, doing research, getting their articles written, and proof read, putting together the newspaper. And I know how important that is because I was a 36-year English teacher, yearbook advisor, had all those things to do in my job, but what struck me was their enthusiasm and the professionalism of people who had age range of seven to 17, most of them, from what I can gather, people of color. And I think that's a very important thing to have and to know. I have provided for each of the board members several documents, and I'm keeping them over here because as a teacher, I know when you have a document in your hand, you're not listening to the person who's talking. What are they? There's the asymmetric design of the Free Press and MMSD from the past. There's a letter from Jewel Adams, Melanie Quarles, Brandon Bivens, Carmella Smith, and Kimberly Walks in favor of the Simpson Street Free Press. There's one from David Weefel of the Cap Times. There's one from my mother, Amita Powell, Madison. And there is something for all the board members to read, a little packet put together, and each board member gets thrilled with a laminated copy of a page from the Simpson Free Press. Excuse me. It's not the same page, so guys, you're just gonna have to deal with the shortened articles, and I think you can. But I do want you to know, it is a quality work. It is something that students need, something that families and parents need. Am I done? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Christina Gomez Schmidt?
Thank you to the school board and administration for your hard work on the very challenging task of deciding the budget for our district schools, programs, and staff that serve all MMSD students. I'm here to talk about a specific budget proposal tonight. The proposal to fund an increase in advanced learning staff that is tied to the Office for Civil Rights Resolution process. I feel there's a few things that need to be clarified. This proposal came through a district advisory committee process. Multiple stakeholder groups, including staff, families, and community members, collaboratively wrestled with the task of identifying root causes of racial disparities in access to and preparation for advanced coursework. The group then crafted specific recommendations to address these disparities that were sent to the Office for Civil Rights. These committee recommendations included increasing the K-8 advanced learning staff by 23 positions to specifically focus on instruction for students currently underrepresented in advanced learning. The three positions being proposed in the budget tonight is the district response to this recommendation. There were also other recommendations related to professional development, curriculum resources, bias training, and system structures. Unfortunately, the advisory committee still has not had the opportunity to present these recommendations to the board, and there was never a report released to district staff, families, or the community. This would explain why so few people know about this resolution, the important work that must be done to address racial disparities in advanced coursework, and how this is tied to the budget. I understand there were concerns expressed in the budget feedback process as to whether investments in these positions for advanced learning would truly benefit students of color. I think this is a valid question to ask, which is why I recommend funding these positions, but I also suggest that the funding be contingent on the Advanced Learning Department sharing a concrete equity strategy with the board, the advisory committee, and the larger MMSD community. This equity strategy would detail what talent development model will be used to provide K-8 students with high-challenge instruction, and how the short-term and long-term success of the proposed pilots will be measured. Without an equity strategy and without these new positions, I am not sure we can move past the community skepticism that advanced learning can work for a larger diversity and a larger number of students. I will also chime in on the Simpson Street Free Press amendment proposal. Please consider funding this program that may not be as politically well-connected as other organizations and will continue to challenge MMSD through its quality news reporting. They do an amazing job of inspiring students to work harder at school and improve their academic skills. This program is advanced learning, talent development in action, and should be supported not only through this budget cycle but as a future community partner with MMSD. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Bryan?
My name's Carl Bryan. I have two students of my own, plus an exchange student this year in Madison. I'm a school counselor in Janesville Craig High School, and I've participated in several Black Excellence Coalition meetings throughout the winter and fall, and I wholeheartedly support its mission and work. I have two requests tonight. One, support the Coalition's current policy recommendations, and two, fund the ongoing work of the Coalition. Participating in the Coalition's been informative to me as a parent and as an educator. Participating has informed me of my own practice and helped me facilitate conversations between students and staff on equity-related issues. Participating has informed me about the ongoing action the district is undertaking to address black achievement. Action to engage the community in collaborative work, action to provide district staff with meaningful professional development, and action to hire and retain black teachers. It's clear that the district is aware of the scope of the issues related to equity. Good policy work has already been done. However, it's also apparent that there's not yet a mechanism for accountability. What does accountability mean? In this context, accountability means, one, ensuring that equity-related recommendations are fully implemented, and, two, measuring progress towards equity-related goals. Accountability will lead to actual change in practice, improvement in climate, and improvement in achievement. Accountability is also important politically. Many parents are disillusioned and angry with the district. Their disillusionment and anger will continue to grow until meaningful change occurs. Accountability is also important with respect to staffing. Many black staff are similarly disillusioned as parents are. Accountability has an impact on attracting and retaining staff. Accountability on racial equity helps HR make the case that Madison is where you want to work. Obviously, none of this is simple, not for any district anywhere grappling with equity and achievement. I do not envy your board roles. As the recent ISMA story about MMSD and subsequent editorials in various papers illustrate, many teachers are also disillusioned and angry over disciplinary policy. Teachers too are calling for accountability, but of a different sort. Teachers are, of course, also essential stakeholders in this endeavor. As the district navigates the issues of systemic racism, it must do so in a way that makes allies and not foes of these two disillusioned stakeholder groups. The district has to find common ground between these two visions of accountability. Again, not a simple task. The politically sensitive nature of equity work underscores, for me, part of the value and function of the Black Excellence Coalition. The Coalition is the broadest district-based mechanism facilitating communication between community, staff, and administration on these equity issues. The Coalition is not the only venue for school and community collaboration. The Coalition's well-positioned to function both as a roundtable and as public review board. As the district continues to develop and implement equity-related policy...
You can just finish your comments, please.
...the Coalition can serve both as the mechanism for broad stakeholder participation in the creation of policy, and likewise as the mechanism for stakeholder participation in measuring the progress and implementation.
Thank you. Jessica Rollin?
I'm speaking tonight as a mother of two biracial daughters, as a member of the LGBT community, and as a person on the autism spectrum. I'm here to speak about funding the Black Excellence Coalition and providing support services instead of funding the criminal justice system. The odds of a child being killed in mass school shooting is less than one in a million. With 133,000 schools in the U.S., statistically, the average student should see a shooting once in 150,000 years. We know that schools employing cops are more likely to defer to SROs, who take a law enforcement approach instead of disciplining students with school-based punishments. Criminalization of youth behavior has engendered a bizarre reality. Students are arrested in schools in setting that is supposed to provide a safe haven, but the behavior that they're being punished for would be noncriminal in any other setting. Children require patience, empathy, and subtlety. Officers typically receive 120 hours of training on the use of force for every eight hours of training for conflict resolution. Decisions to interpret disruptive behavior as criminal is done at the discretion of each individual SRO. The criminal justice system has all the subtlety and nuance of a hammer. If you put that system in charge of kids' day-to-day safety, you shouldn't be surprised if it starts to appear that they're treating kids like nails. Armed SROs change the environment from one that fosters the academic and social development of children to a place under constant surveillance, one where adults expect the worst of students rather than promote their best. If money allocated to criminalizing our students was instead providing trauma-informed care, we'd foster better community and school and family relationships. Treat children as individuals, not assuming they'll be criminals. Children are just that, children. They must be nurtured, taught, appreciated, and heard. Madison is not the mecca that the media makes it out to be. Our minority families and families with children having mental wellness challenges deserve better. They don't need the police judging their actions. They need school staff helping them navigate the effects of trauma. They need community-school-based programming to help understand, heal, and grow. They need us all assuming the best in each individual, not the perception of doing badly. Criminalizing our students is reactive, building community, providing mental wellness programming, including trauma-informed care as prevention. Let's love, not shame. We need resources trained and certified in social-emotional competencies to be able to adequately and appropriately address negative student behaviors. We're all products of our environment, and our environment is not kind or supporting as long as SROs patrol our hallways. Listen to what the Black Excellence Coalition has put together. These are the folks that are feeling the effects most, and their voice matters.
And after Michelle, John Raidenknocker? If you can wait in line or just step up.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I know all of you. I've been teaching in Madison schools for 27 years, and I have never seen so many teachers and other staff leave our school district. My colleagues are receiving better offers in other districts. They are leaving. Emails I receive from the Doyle Building almost always end with a sentiment about appreciation for all that staff does. Not making the 2.44 percent COLA happen does not feel like I'm being appreciated. This 2... This 2.44% cost of living means that I can cover groceries that were more expensive than they were last year. Rent is increasing. Giving us anything less than the 2.44 means a pay cut. I remember seeing most of you at the Capitol when the protests began in 2011. I was also heartened by hearing your words of support for workers during your endorsement interviews for both MTI and for SCUFL. Now is the time to make your priorities clear. You can stand with your employees or not. Please support the Carusi Amendment. There are cuts that can be made. We have an ever-increasing number of admins and NUPS. We spend too much money renting facilities. There are definitely options for cuts. Your vote makes your priorities clear. We are the people that work with students all day long. Our students deserve that we hire and retain the best staff possible. Please support the Carusi Amendment and a full COLA of 2.44. Thank you.
Thank you, John Radenocher. After John, we have Kim Gasper-Rabek.
Thank you to the members of the board that were proactive in working for a cost-of-living wage increase for our staff. I was surprised to hear that a 2.44 cost-of-living adjustment was not automatically built into the budget from the start as it was being drafted. I challenge board members to propose and vote for a floor amendment tonight to include a 2.44% cost-of-living adjustment. As the name itself says, it is to provide for the increasing cost of living. Anything less amounts to a pay cut for all personnel as our wages will no longer cover the rising costs of rent, medical care, house payments, taxes, heating bills, gas, and all those other things we use for living. Step and level increases are not earned by all staff every year, and if that is considered our cost-of-living adjustment, it's as if steps and levels actually count for nothing. While neighboring districts are raising their base salary by more than 2.44% and attracting MMSD staff away, it's counterproductive and disrespectful to offer anything less than a cost-of-living increase for all. As was mentioned previously, we receive emails from our leadership that usually include the phrase "thanks for all you do." If those words are sincere, we'll believe it when you help us keep up with the cost of living.
Kim, Gasper-Rabek. And then Brandy Raybuck, and then Brandy Grayson.
Hello, everyone. My name is John Brown.
Okay. John, John, are you, are you, we're looking for Kim Gasper-Raybuck.
No.
Did you sign up to speak, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, at what point, you're not on the budget agenda. Are you on general public appearance?
I'm American. I don't understand language, but I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
John, 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 can you please let Kim, and we'll get you?
No, no, no.
You have to sign up to speak, John. You cannot just speak.
No, 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 I'm here now. I'm here now. I have to speak. I came, I came along.
John?
I'll cede my time to John.
Thank you, thank you. Be American for me. I've come a long way for this understanding. I did over 20 years in prison to come back to the society. I did over 20 years. I'm not right, I support the decision because when I was in my teens in Chicago, we did have officers in school. We called them officer-friendly because they took us home to our parents and they reported us to our parents on what we did, not to assist them to understand what we are and later on fix a problem that we can't fix. But I'm not here to complain. I'm here to fix a problem. Right now, I have a problem in Dane County, Madison, that right now, I am the service provider of local, state, and federal services, and all these services outside the practices of the people. Now, I have ran for three years to understand what services are. I have ran with Gloria. I have ran with many peoples in here. And I've come to find that I'm finna bump heads with the service that we have in Dane County, Madison, because I'm on top of genocide of my people. Because I also helped that genocide because I sold drugs in the 1980s, and when I get out, I found that I affect my kids, I affect my mama, I affect the community. Everybody I see is dope fiends. In real life, all my generation became dope fiends, and all their kids is the ones fighting in school. And I don't understand why we can't understand that the behaviors come from the parents like the Bible say. We don't forget the Bible, and that's my teaching. Nothing can stop me but the Bible. I have come a long way. I don't want to embarrass nobody in here. But right now, everybody in the system is cussing this board out. And I don't want to cuss this board out because we need this board. But all the peoples I know in the communities that I come from, they are cussing everybody out in this room because y'all saying y'all can fix a problem, which y'all don't even come to address the problem. I'm gonna have somebody dead tonight, ODing, I'm gonna have a young girl, 12-years-old, getting raped by her family. I have this every day. Women tell me they got raped. I have a lot of things going on that I need y'all help to fix a problem in my community and not leave us behind. Because right now, I'm on the wall right now because this system is killing my people, and I was so blind back in the 80s that I did not know I sold that much dope to my peoples, me and my friends from Chicago, that it did this much damage to Madison, Wisconsin. I did over 20 years to come back. My best friend got 61 years. Right now, he got 61 years from the office. The same office I work in, we got all that time out that office when y'all didn't know that. There's a lot of things being blocked from this board and everything because we have to have feelings. We can't let our partners and friends in the office or on the street take us from our truth. Because this is a practice of life that we must live by. The Bible say on earth as it is in heaven. This don't look like heaven when I got out of prison. It now look like hell. This look worse than prison. Because it's real. I know so many peoples in here, I know a lot of peoples in here, when they leave this place, man, we got to go back out there and struggle in our life. But it's best to be a part of something and not be a part of nothing. But you cannot be a part of something that when you in this office, you do not think about the drug dealers, the prostitutes, the ones that I deal with, the rejects, the disenfranchised, the disempowered, the disadvantaged. It seem like everybody here ain't got no disadvantage but me. But you can't see mine's, but I can see yours. So we don't have no limitation about, no, three minutes. It didn't take three minutes to get us in this. And three minutes ain't gonna get us out. So this is the conversation y'all need to hear because I ain't going nowhere. I'm thinking about locking up a lot of innocent people if you're innocent or not, and that's what I'm trying to not do. I understand, Brandy, what you're saying. We community leaders, I know what you're saying. But I'm different than everybody else. I push my way in this country, and I push my behavior on the people. My granddaughter, 12-years-old, she out having sex with strangers and everything. Her mama don't know life, and these folks got my kids. I tell the truth. Because when I leave, I gotta see somebody OD. I gotta see somebody 12-years-old with a shorts up their butt in public enticing older dudes.
Thank you, John. Can you finish up?
Finish. I'm just playing, y'all.
Hey, John, I found your slip. Thank you.
I just want to introduce myself to say I ain't going nowhere in the Black community. If something come down that we want a war to set my peoples free, we got a new day today. Because I ain't going nowhere because my family dying, my people dying. You know what I'm saying? I understand what y'all, this hurts y'all feelings. You need your damn feelings hurt.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Kim Gasper-Raybuck. And then, and then after, after Kim, we have Brandy Grayson.
Hi, my name is Kim Gasper-Raybuck. I've spoken on many occasions to this school board, and honestly, I'm not feeling very well tonight, so pardon me for my lack of clarity. I wanted to take just a minute to, sorry. I'm sorry, I'm not feeling very well tonight. I'm sorry, not gonna be able to speak. Pardon me.
Thank you, Kim. Brandy Grayson, and then we have Victoria Conley. After Brandy.
All power to the people.
All power to the people.
Nice to see y'all again. First time seeing and addressing the new school board. I just want to point out the differences between the two different people that were coming up to the mic. We had a subset of white folks who are from MTI, and I just want you to know that you do deserve a raise, and y'all should give them their 2.44. And I also want to address the fact that there seems to be a disconnection between the needs of the teachers and what the needs of Black students are. It's as if we have to have an either-or instead of an and. And I think as teachers, it's also very important for you to make those connections while you're up here and, you know, in your future conversations with people, because I do believe you deserve your raise, and I also believe that our Black students deserve an investment, right? So invest in the Black Excellence recommendations. And I'm going to challenge the school board not just to invest in the Black Excellence recommendations, but to invest more. The current budget has allocated $350,000. $250,000 cannot be utilized during school time. So what does that really say about how we perceive Black excellence, right? We understand that our students need additional support. Teachers need additional support. Am I right? Am I right? All right, we can agree on that. See, we together, it's the and, right? So in order to provide teachers with additional support and meet the needs of our students, and specifically, Black students, we have to invest more. I think you need to double it. I think you need to add $350,000 to the fund that can be invested to having parents and people in schools to support students and to support our teachers, right? Because what this BEP, this BEP plan and this emergency response team that you guys have within all our schools are not working. What does work, what empirical data shows that work, is communities leaders and community folks inside our schools, people and teachers, and not teachers, but parents who can connect with our students on an interpersonal level, can connect on a cultural level, and can translate for our white teachers. Not because you don't, well, you don't get it. And you don't get it because you don't have to get it, because Black students and Black folks do speak a different dialect. And sometimes that dialect is misinterpreted and misunderstood, leading to this prison-to-pipeline we're seeing, and leading to this over-investment in police, right? I know you guys took a bold step. You may remove one cop. I'm gonna ask that you take a bolder step, that you take that money, invest in parents. I dare you to put 15 parents in each school, right? That's what I dare you to do. And see the difference between disparities in education and the difference in suspension rates. And y'all, teachers, when you advocate for you, you're advocating for our students. I'm gonna ask that you move from this place of you to this place of we, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Victoria Conley?
Hi, hi, everybody. My name's Victoria Conley. I'm just here in support of the Black Excellence, and I'm here for my daughter. She's a third-grade student going into fourth grade. I removed her from her current school, and I'm sending her back to her other elementary. I had to wait till the next school year because I missed the cutoff for the internal transfer. I wrote a lot of you guys, I wrote the superintendent, and they couldn't do anything about it. She had a hard time transferring over to her school, which is shank. She was, she was, and she still is, a very gifted and talented student, but she was very, very bored with her classroom, and we tried a lot of stuff to get her involved in her class and to not be so bored with the coursework that was given to her. Since she was a head, she was actually top of her class. She was top five. And since she was at the point where she was at, her teacher had advised me there was no, nothing else he could, he could do for her, and that I needed to place her into a tutoring or get her other help outside of the school district. And when I asked if she could have her coursework changed to where maybe she spent more time during math and furnishing that skill and less of reading because she had read past her Lexi and on, there was nothing else to do there, I was told that you guys put in place the curriculum for the core, and there was no way she, during reading time for that 15 minutes, she could work on math, because it would be, again, be something based around an equity, which I did not understand what he meant by that. Otherwise, I would have to have her placed and get an IEP in order to get any help in any other areas. And since she did not meet the criteria to be a little lower in like math for an IEP, she wasn't able to get placed in IEP, because I said, well, hey, if she can get the help there and a little extra, put her there. The principal said, no, we can't do that. So again, my student was left, left where she was at. And then I pulled her. You guys approved the internal transfer, so she's going back to her other school this year, and I'll just drive her. I support the raise for the teachers because, again, her teacher did express to me that he just didn't have enough time in his day. He had his own family and things to go to, and after school was done, you know, he had small kids and family at home that he had to, he had to do, and he couldn't do more to build a curriculum set for my one student. He witnessed, and he understood where she was at and that she was a gifted kid, but it just wasn't, he just didn't have the time, and it really wasn't his, I don't know, it wasn't his place to just go ahead and do that for her alone. So I am asking if you guys could maybe get more help in the elementary school, not just for middle schools and higher, but for elementaries for gifted and talented. And allow parents to come, because I don't want to have to call every day to say, can I come sit in my daughter's classroom? Or when I show up at school, be told, wait, let me call the teacher to see if it's okay for you to come. I just want to come support. I'm off Mondays and Tuesdays. I work for the state of Wisconsin, three days a week, and I'm off those other days. I'm available to come.
Thank you. That completes our budget public appearances. We'll move on to the general public appearances, and we'll start with Devin Duffield. And after Devin, we have Turun.
My name is Devin Duffield. I'm here as a parent of two elementary students in the district, and as a parent, a member of educators actively working towards anti-racism. I'm here to support the work of Black Excellence recommendations from the Black Excellence Coalition. With the new leadership coming in, I want to make sure that this work of centering Black voices, specifically, Black student voices, continues and grows within MMSD. Also, I don't have the answers, but I do know, and I think everyone on the board knows as well, there's no place for cops in our schools.
Thank you. Okay, next is Turun. I'm sure I'm not pronouncing that correctly. T-R-U-N? To one? Just, how do you say, how do you pronounce it?
Turun.
Turun, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Hello. My name is Turun Short, and I am a recent graduate from Madison West High School. Okay. I am here to talk, I am not here to talk about the statistics of having cops in schools. I'm here to talk about my experiences. Throughout high school, I've participated in academic programs such as Mac Scholars, Black Student Union, Restorative Justice, and Avid. And one thing that I found that they had in common is that they're underfunded. I feel as if we live in a district where they rather support a cops program that oppresses colored students rather than, rather than supporting my education by not, by not properly funding programs that support marginalized groups when they have no support. Cops are, cops are not placed in my school to protect colored students. They're placed to put fear in them. I feel as if, if you can't properly train teachers how to teach students who have been traumatized and don't have the proper support at home, then you should go find teachers that can. You have to invest your money into students, you have to invest your money into teachers that have to do their job. We have support systems that could be used rather than implemented cops. We have to stop blaming children for their faulty upbringings and teach them the skills they need to be successful in this society. What I've learned from, what I've learned from the programs throughout high school is that they're a support system. I was, I was a vice president of my Black Student Union, and I learned that we built a brotherhood. We had each other back at all times. Unfortunately, this year, I had to stop Mac Scholars because it wasn't supported by the district. Mac Scholars was a group that brought Latino boys, African-American boys, and Asian-American boys together and fight for the same fight that they have together. And I feel as if, and I feel as if we're getting deprived from our education because we aren't given the support that we need. And that's all I have to say. We have no room for cops.
Thank you. Edward Koharski. And AK. So we have Edward Koharski. So we have Edward Koharski and then after Edward, we have AK.
Good evening. My name's Ed Koharski. I'm a former parent of a student at first Lapham and then Elvium Elementary. What I want to talk to you about tonight goes back 14 years and it concerns Jane Belmore, the proposed interim superintendent. I happened to spend the last hour of her original tenure with MMSD before she retired the first time. And I was there on the last day of school, the last hour of the last day of school because we had, I relate to the previous speaker, we had great difficulty getting approval for transferring our son, who's an African-American, large for his age, very high needs special ed child. He had about five diagnoses and he was not easy. But they schooled at Lapham despite being generally terrific and loved and turned in great numbers for 97% of the students, had a dirty little secret that the special ed kids were horribly mistreated. And we experienced that. We, both years that he was, four-year-old kindergarten was terrific. It was its own kingdom and he was safe and he had won, he loved it, he had a job and he thrived. He got up into the kindergarten and not so great, but he had an African-American male teacher, which was pretty good. And the other four or five little African-American boys, who are all, also mostly high needs boys, were in there. And Mr. Stovall did his best to kind of protect them from the system and they did okay, but not great. We get into first grade and that's when Barbara, the principal was, had moved on and wasn't there to have his back. And we had an Art Rainwater Grow Your Own principal who was inexperienced and we, we were assigned to the rookie teacher, a nice white woman from a small town up north who claimed to be a brilliant teacher because she was fourth generation teacher. And we didn't find out what was being done against him and to him out of her inexperience and ignorance and lack of knowledge of how to deal with someone that was culturally different and neurologically different until the first semester completed. And by that time, we were, the damage had been done. This boy that loved school was afraid of it. And we had to survive the rest of that semester, second semester, to go through the transfer process. And that was, you know, at that time at least, it was tagged on to the inter-district transfer process for an intra-district transfer. We just wanted to go to Elvium because we heard it was better. So I ended up in there for an hour plus negotiating with Jane Belmore and she insisted, she insisted that I remove our statement on the form, which was asked for, of why we wanted a transfer. She didn't want, we, she wanted us to agree to say that we wanted it just because.
Can you finish up, please? Thank you.
I'm gonna finish anyway because I'm sorry it's taking longer, but you know, I have to, I should have been here the last time she was up. To pay almost three quarters of a million dollars to someone who has committed such an egregious form of blackmail on a parent in the midst of their crisis over their student is unforgivable infraction. And if we're gonna have this kind of one-strike-and-you're-out harshness on our students that we're heading through the, through the prison pipeline, then we should have a one-strike-and-you're-out standard for our administrators, particularly if we're gonna spend a quarter of a million dollars for them to come back and do something again. What this really is about is bureaucracy protecting itself over the interests of the students and the parents.
Thank you, Mr. Koharski.
The quote in the, quote in the paper was that Jane's highest priority is the, the teachers and the principals. And that's admirable up to a point, but when it's weaponized against the student, has happened in our case, it's not, you know, it's not an unmitigated good to be in favor of principals and student and, principals and teachers. It depends what they're up to and whether they're closing ranks to protect themselves in the system or whether they're doing their job and serving the students and the parents. And that, that didn't happen here.
Thank you, Mr. Koharski.
I recommend that you look at the other 11 candidates and rethink that.
Thank you. Monker and then AD. Monker and then we have AD after that. Is Monker in the room? I'm sorry? AD?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, AK.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jewel Adams. First, I want to start off by saying that Simpson Street Free Press is black excellence. Okay? And I'm also here for, on behalf of Freedom, Inc., also. I've been coming to school board meetings for over 10 years now and I'm kind of very disappointed in what has been going on because my opinion is nothing has been done. Promises, 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 nothing has been done to close the achievement gap or whatever's going on that we supposed to be here for. Anyway, on behalf of Freedom, Inc., Free Press, we have, this, look around this, I have never seen these many young adults in a school board meeting ever, ever. So that means that, to me, that tells me that these children here are afraid of what their future holds for them. If they don't want cops in school and you're for them, then there should not be no cops in school. It took five, five, five minutes to approve cops in school. Simpson Street Free Press has been open 26 years. We have not yet received a fund from MSCR for Simpson Street Free Press. So I'm saying if we want to close the achievement gap, then we need to support Simpson Street Free Press, which is our black kingdom, our magic kingdom. Kids come there, their grades go up, their reading and writing and arithmetic scores are shown to improve. But yet, we will put money into building a new jail and money into putting cops in schools where our children will be headed if we don't close the gap. So I'm just saying that there's no need to have cops in school. Half of our kids here are already scared, you know? So now what? They're gonna drop out of school because the police is in there? So they will be handcuffed and taken off to the new jail for youths? No, that's not right. Fund Simpson Street Free Press, give them a chance. We already have something that's working. Support Simpson Street Free Press with our funds. 26 years Simpson Street Free Press doors have been open with not yet funded from you all. Thank you.
Thank you. AK, AK and then Monker.
We're a little out of order, but that's okay. My name is Bianca Gomez. I'm the youth justice director at Freedom, Inc. My name's Bianca Gomez. I'm the youth justice director at Freedom, Inc. I'm gonna start with a little call and response to remind people while we're here, so I want y'all to repeat after me. The mandate for black people in this time.
The mandate for black people in this time.
Is to avenge the suffering of black ancestors.
To avenge the suffering of black ancestors.
To, to earn the respect of future generations.
To earn the respect of future generations.
And be willing to be transformed in the service of the work.
And be willing to be transformed in the service of the work.
And that's why we're here. We're fighting for our future generations, right? We're fighting for social justice and I know that's a part of MMSD's mantra, I know that's a part of the vision, but we don't actually see it happening. We constantly show up and tell you what, what our vision of social justice is, right? Our vision of freedom, our vision of justice does not include the police. At Freedom, Inc., we're actually experts in transformative justice. We've been doing it for 20 years. We travel all around the country, all around the world, learning about alternatives to police and jails, right? So I, I think a lot of people have the perception that because we do transformative justice work, we don't hold our people accountable, we don't hold our kids accountable, and that's actually not true. Our people will tell you that's not true. Our kids sitting in the back row will tell you that's not true. What we don't do is use prisons or jails in punishment, right? We find healthy alternatives to police and prisons to hold people accountable. We actually look at the root causes of violence, right? We don't focus on cursing, we don't focus on like whatever behaviors, we look at the root causes of those behaviors. And I will tell you that it's oppression. I will tell you when your kids, when our kids are acting out in school, it's because they're oppressed in their classrooms, they're oppressed by police, they're oppressed by this board that continues to invest in police instead of investing in our kids. And Mary Burke, I just want to like address a quote that I saw from you in a recent news article talking about black children wanting, for black children that you spoke to wanting police in their schools and that you said that they were scared to share their opinions. And I will tell you that when we dig into black people and to their minds and to what they're actually feeling around police and safety, it's not that they want police, they want to feel safe, right? And when I came to Freedom, Inc. four years ago after the murder of Tony Robinson, I was somebody that was like, listen, y'all, we just need to do more trainings, we just need to have a one-on-one with Michael Cobal, we just need to get them to understand. Freedom, Inc. did not shut the door. Freedom, Inc. did not kick me out. Freedom, Inc. did not cuss me out. They welcomed me to the table and we love all black people and we welcome those black children to our table.
Thank you, Bianca.
Hold on. And Mary, I still challenge you and Gloria to a debate, a public debate around police in schools and I would like her response.
Thank you, Bianca. Is there, is there AK? Do we have AK in the room? AK? After AK, we have Monker.
Hi, my name is Alani. I am 10 years old and I attend Randall Elementary School. I'm here today because I want you to listen to my story. I do not want cops in school because I'm, it only harms my people. I'm a mixed child of Cambodian and black. I know what it is like to be a colored person. This is my story. I think there should be no cops in school because cops don't treat people of color the same way as white people. I am going to tell you a little about slavery back in the day. Slavery is as old as civilization itself. However, the enslavement of African-American was probably the worst incident of slavery in human history, mostly because it was justified by racism. The four high schools that have cops in school is Memorial, East, West and La Follette. The Freedom, Inc. demands that I support is take cops out of our school, end the contract, invest in youth of color, especially black youth, and community control over school safety. You will see me more at these meetings. I will continue to fight for my people. Together, we are, we are strong and united, we stand divided, we fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Monker? Monker, are you gonna come up and speak or? After Monker, we have AD. AD just went? Okay. After that is KM. After Monker is KM.
I, I had to grab the mic and speak a little closer because coming from the back, I couldn't really hear nothing that anyone was saying. Can the back people hear me back there? Okay, cool, great. Yeah, so I'm here today, super, super disappointed in this board for voting to actually keep police in schools. I don't know what else there is to say. I mean, y'all have all the information Bianca has. Bianca has like publicly said that come to a debate, whatever the gaps are in y'all's analysis, like let's sit and talk about it. And yet, y'all still choose to put police in schools at the same time that you're saying that you want black excellence. I don't know how else to say this, but I'll try and explain it again. When there's a harm that has happened, it's not enough to go and talk to the person that's been hurt and say, I'm so sorry. Do you need a Band-Aid? You also have to go to the person who has hurt them and say, that was wrong. You must be held accountable. You all cannot continue to say, black children, I know that you're hurting, let's put a little bit of money into black excellence and then at the same time, keep reinforcing the behaviors and the policies and the people who are criminalizing them and causing that hurt in the schools. It actually doesn't make any sense at all. If you actually care about social justice and you care about making lasting change, you need to do both. And it, and it's really actually an overstatement for me to say that you're investing in black excellence because in less than five minutes, you put $360,000 into police, in less than five minutes, you put an additional $30,000 into police earlier this year. And yet, it's taken this long for you all to say, oh, maybe we're gonna put like $250,000 into black excellence. Tell me where I'm wrong here. Like there's something wrong with this picture. We need to start getting serious about actually investing in the leadership, the creativity and the well-being of black youth and other youth of color. Get serious about it. Remove police from schools. They do not need to be anywhere near the schools. You all are complicit in sending those children that keep getting encountered by them and citations and arrested to the new youth prison that Dane County just decided to build. You all are responsible if you allow police in the schools, if you continue to endorse them being in the schools. And especially, I want to say, Chris, who voted for this? But when you were being elected, when you were running, you used Freedom, Inc.'s language, you used youth in school, you used, you used, you used our name. You exploited our name and you got elected. Folks were hoping for a change when they voted for you. And look at what you do. You come and you sit up here and you betray black youth. That's not what Freedom, Inc. is about and don't use our name if you're not going to act in accordance with our values.
Thank you, Monker.
And the last thing I want to say, the last thing I want to say is that I applaud the work of the Black Excellence Coalition. I do, I really do. And I know that that money that y'all are putting towards black excellence is not enough. You cannot consistently spend up to $2 million and probably even more on disciplining our children. And if you look at the data, it's to discipline black children. And sit here and applaud yourselves for putting $250,000 into a black excellence plan that up until the coalition got involved, was really only concerned about academics. You need to look at the climate that's in the schools. You need to look at how youth are feeling when they're in your schools, how black youth, how black youth with disability, how black queer youth, how black trans youth are feeling in your schools. Start from there. Look at what they actually need. Invest your money into that, invest your time into that. Some of y'all sitting up here need to do some studying. Invest your time, invest your resources. No more talking, no more statements. I don't want to hear it the next time a black student, a black child is abused and assaulted in your, in your schools. I don't want to hear it. I don't want to see a statement. Do something.
Thank you, Monker. We got KM next. KM and then after that, we have Boo.
Hi, my name is Kylie. I am 10 years old. I go to Randall Elementary. In my opinion, there should be no cops in school because cops treat black and brown students different from white students. Then people are still being treated like slaves by white people and I think having cops in school makes that worse. Having cops in school needs to stop. I don't want cops in school because they arrest black students. Schools should be a safe place for all students. I don't feel safe having police in school and people get and people get harassed like my friends and that makes me sad. But I know that I can do something that can change that. Freedom Inc. and I demands that we should take cops out of schools and end contact, then to invest in youth of color, especially black youth, and communities controlled over schools. You, you will see me more in these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Fu, and I know I'm mispronouncing that so wrong. And then after that is JC. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Shsing Pung Yew Moa. I go by Pung Yew or Pong Yew in English phonics. I go by Heem His. I work at Freedom Inc. I'm really just up here to say something about, so ongoing conversations and discourse around ICE and incarceration, black youth. I'm thinking particularly of Gloria as a proponent of policing and how ICE is destroying communities and tearing families apart. I think that, so I wanna relate to you, Gloria. Just because I'm not black doesn't mean I can't have empathy for them, alright? And I feel like particularly with how the Latino community is affected by ICE, there's so much parallel. And I don't know how you can't feel it in your heart that black families are being terrorized, the youth are being incarcerated. How? I got nothing other than that. It's, it's obvious that black folks are disproportionately incarcerated and I know, and the system has, has a proven track record with being racist and has always been racist. I am not gonna stand on the wrong side of history and I hope you won't either because incarceration is destroying families. And I hope that you, from now on, are making choices that will, that will really actually heal all of our families, all of our families and our communities and not just benefit those who are far enough from blackness and close enough to white supremacy. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you for your words. JC and AM. JC and AM.
Testing, no, but. It's funny how we keep ending here every day, all day, with the same issue and the same debate that hasn't been solved. I'm not here to tell you about how to do your job. I'm telling you, should we have police in school or not? And I don't think that we should have police in school because, I don't think we should have police in school because police are there to prevent violence, which they're not doing. Police are basically brought into schools to do their job, not someone else's. Look around you. You see you for color, but you don't see what you face on the daily. Do you see what's in our society? Like a black young man that was tortured by the police and they all brought their guns out for no reason. And a lady that was standing behind the camera screaming and crying because her husband got shot at the same place and nothing has happened. Black people die on the daily and you don't do nothing. Black people are dying while white people are getting closer, which isn't fair. We are forced to go to schools with police and forced to talk to police and get closer to police when police are doing nothing but arresting us on the daily. You think police should be in school because police are doing good by white people 'cause you get your white privilege, but to not doing good by black people because we don't get our learning, 'cause every time it's a disruption where the police coming to arrest a black student for nothing. It can be for a fight that a teacher could handle, but instead, they call the police. Why is that? Because you guys are not doing your job. You should invest your money into youth of color and not your money into a jail. It's homeless people that are sitting outside with no food to eat, but instead, you sit here all cocky but don't do nothing for black people. So instead of wasting your money on a jail, waste your money on something better.
Thank you. Next, we have AM and Sam.
I don't like the way people in the city treat black people when they need help. When Tony Robinson needed help, the police killed him. And when the black boy at West needed help, the police beat him up. Black kids are always getting kicked out of class and school when really, they probably need someone safe to talk to. There are only two adults in my school I feel comfortable talking to and there needs to be more. Instead of spending money on police and spending money on, I mean, instead of spending money on police, spend money on counselors and other adults that can help us without arresting us or giving us tickets they know we can't pay. I am sick of watching videos and hearing stories about black people being beat up by police and teachers saying the N-word. Y'all got the power to change it, but you don't. This is why we are demanding that you give us the power so we can make the right choice for black kids, take cops out of schools.
Thank you. We have Sam and then Nasi. Sam. And then after Sam, we have Nasi.
Good evening, my name is Sambo. So I'm here to ask, when do we say enough is enough? Are we waiting for something major to happen to our kids? Major as in when it's happening to the white kids? Because isn't it major enough when our black and brown kids have been harmed by teachers during this school year? If teachers can harm, can feel that they can do harm to our kids when they are entrusted by us parents to send our kids to, to them to receive education and instead, they are being violently harmed, what makes you think the police with more systematic authority will protect our children? The police on the streets are not protecting our kids now. Instead, everywhere we see in medias, black and brown kids are brutally beaten or shot down. Now, the police are given easy access to our children and their well-being if you decide to keep, put cops into school. So for me, as a genocide survivor and an immigrant, I would like to tell you that the Khmer Rouge caused a lot of trauma amongst our Cambodian folks. Coming from a, from a country where speaking out against authorities would get you executed. If you ask our Southeast, Southeast Asian folks, if we have any issues with the police, they would simply reply, "No." And that is because that they fear, a fear that has been instilled in them because of the genocide. We have been taught that to stay safe is to stay silent. And even when our kids are being harmed here in America and our approach by police officers, we are told to go along with them and they are asked that that means, even if it means they are brutally harmed. So I want to remind you guys, 'cause I know we talked a lot here and I've come here all the time and asked respectfully to take cops out of school. And the only thing people have heard are the profanities. But how many times have you told your kids to go get off of social media, to do your homework, to do the chores? Over and over again, you ask them so that they would better themselves, right? And as many times as you ask them, they ignore you. So I'm pretty sure someone here, at least one time, had used some kind of profanity, used some kind of strong words to tell them like, "Hey, get the hell off of your phone." That's what we're doing here, the same thing, 'cause you guys aren't listening to us. We've come here many times and many times we've asked. Now, there's a group of women who we would think that you, as mothers, as aunts, as, as nieces, would understand the safety of our kids. And the one thing I've always heard is that they're protecting our children, but when this first started in 1953, SROs were set in Flint, Michigan to Sacramento, California, where a majority of the kids there are black and brown kids. So who are we really protecting when the mass shootings have been caused by white kids?
Thank you. Next is Nacy and then SY.
Hi, Autumn, just being asked to speak. Nancy's not here tonight. I just wanna start by, by thanking Freedom Inc., their leaders and their youth for organizing tonight and being here and continuously speaking truth to power. And for their brilliance and creativity and power. They are revolutionaries. So the reality and coupled with data is on the wall right there. I'm not gonna come up with, with more numbers. More so, just something that I have observed in being at these board meetings. I haven't seen a single youth come up to this mic and speak about why they want police in schools. I haven't seen a single youth come up to this mic, show up to these meetings and, and speak that, that reality for them or that truth for them. I've seen black and brown youth do it every single week for two years. They show up, they sacrifice their time, their energy, their labor, and they come here and they show up. And most of the folks I have seen come up to this podium in favor of cops. Yes, some parents who say their kids want, want cops in schools. It almost seems like they're less angry about the possibility, right? Because we're also talking about even opening your mind to the vision of not having police. They're not even maybe so much angry about that as the fact that they're unorganized. The fact that they feel isolated in, in their beliefs. Freedom Inc. is organized. They've been showing up. All the students that maybe do want cops or that have been framed and tokenized in the press, those black students. The students that haven't shown up are such a prime example of complicity and how this board for two years has honored and privileged that over black and brown youth and their creativity and their brilliance and their power and the fact that they are revolutionaries. Complicity has been honored over that. This isn't even an indictment of this current board right now. This is, this is me asking to do that work that's really important of recognizing what has already happened and what's got us here and recognizing that as you go into making that vote on whether or not to continue this contract.
Thank you. SY and NP. SY and NP.
When I think of jails, I think of the messed up system that was created after slavery was abolished. Harmful and deadly forces were used to lock up black people and it is so used till this day, even in our schools. Cops were never trained to build relationships. They were created to harass black people after slavery. And now, they are trained to use deadly force on black and brown bodies. There is mass incarceration of black community in Madison. More than 50% of black people are locked up in jail but make up only 5% of the population in Dane County. So when new jails are built here, the only people who will continue to be locked up are black people and even black children's. Kids are being sentenced to live the rest of their lives in prisons. Whenever there is a behavior of any normal teen, such as arguing, going late to class, or fighting, the security guards of the police are always called on but never actually do any help. All they do is harm. These students shouldn't be, shouldn't be locked up. They should be going to school, enjoying their youth, making mistakes, growing up, doing what white teenagers and youth adults get to do. You guys are spending way too much time and money just putting cops in our schools to lock up students, especially black students. All this time, you could have spent those thousand dollars on students of color who actually really need the help.
Thank you. NP. NP after NP, SH.
Hello, my name is Navi. I'm 13 and I attend Thomas Jefferson Middle School and I'm going into eighth grade. I'm Cambodian, Thai, Vietnamese, and Chinese. As a student of color, I feel different in many ways. Some kids back in elementary asked me to translate many different Asian languages. I was mixed up with Mexican 'cause I was too dark and my eyes were too big to be Asian. In the first school I attended, I always was made fun of because of my Asian last name, Phi. Kids in almost every single grade came up to me and called me Phi and mocked me. I came into class crying and no one did anything. I wanted to change my last name to my dad's last name. One of the substitutes yelled and targeted colored kids, even if the white kids did the same exact things as they did. School doesn't teach me about my culture and Freedom Inc. has Cambodian Youth Group program. And I'm happy to be in their program because they taught me about the things I don't know my, about my culture and they teach me about the things that I should know. Until now, school should have more teachers and counselors of color because they experience more, they teach us more about other cultures around the world. What I don't know, what I don't understand is why some white people say, "Get out of our country or go back to your own country." When they stole this land from the Native Americans, not only did they steal this land, they stole this land, they stole the Native American children and put them into camps to turn them white. They cut their hair, changed their clothes, and changed their names, baptized them, forcing them to be white. A colored teacher taught me this. I support Freedom Inc. demands. Take cops out of schools, invest in youth of color, community control over school safety, including student and parent decision-making authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is HA after H. I'm sorry, SH. SH and then Jury after SH.
Hi, my name is Sodia and I'm a person of color. Me as a person of color, I'm here to talk about Freedom's, Freedom Inc. youth demands. Number one, take cops out of school. Many students don't feel comfortable having police officers in our school because of what's been going on for many, many years and that's racism. And social medias have been showing us exactly what that is. Me, I don't feel comfortable going outside because what if I'm there at the wrong time? I might be in a situation where I don't want to be in this, in, and also, I don't want to get hurt for something I didn't do. We can use the money for something better, like paying the teachers more or paying the teachers more, have school supplies and school environment. Now, many things can fall into a better school environment. Fixing schools' toilet, have a clean school, many things. Also, have more teachers of colors. Our second demand is invest in youth of color. Youth of color needs help with getting bus passes, homes, free lunch, and housing. Also, a youth advocate for them to talk to and feel comfortable to relate to. And the last thing that we are demanding is community control over school safety, like having parents and students make decisions in the school, not just you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jury. Next is Jury and after Jury is Niaj. Jury in the room? And after Jury is Niaj. Or Nia?
Can y'all hear me in the back? Okay. This is honestly not how I was planning on spending my summer. Coming in, attending these meetings and telling y'all the same thing I've been telling y'all for two years. Black students are targets by police in schools. It is not a statistic and it's not on a report or a data sheet. I'm tired of hearing about young black girls being beaten on because they want to wear perfume in the hallway. Or MMSD letting a young black girl get sexually assaulted in East High School and nothing being said about it. Or having to watch the young boy from West be slammed into walls and beat him with a bag over his head. I would love to be able to see more black youth on the east and north side outside more, but even playing at the park will get a child killed, beaten or worse. Please think about this before you decide to permanently ruin lives of youth of color. Please think about the negative impact that police have on black students. Many students, including myself, have received abuse from our school's EROs. We are verbally, sometimes and even physically threatened and harassed. We, the community, are demanding that the cops be taken out of school and demand that the schools invest, use the money and invest it into youth of color and make sure that we are provided with the necessary supplies, food, transportation, support and resources that we need to thrive. And that families and students have control of school discipline and safety. Madison has been said to be the worst place to raise a black child. And to keep the police in our schools aren't making anything better. You have black and Southeast Asian students sitting here telling you from our own mouths about the horrid experiences that we've had, proving that cops are more harmful than helpful. Please take the cops out of school because they're choosing property over our lives and education and that's not right. No cops in school.
Thank you. And then Savan.
Hello again to all of you. My name is Mai Nia Moa. As your community member, I have been here at these meetings many times. I know that all of you are probably tired of seeing myself along with many others who are opposed to building new jails and having cops in our schools. We are also tired of seeing and speaking to the same people repeatedly. I had hoped that maybe by now you all understand our black and brown communities and would support and believe our experiences around police violence. It's very sad that people who we call our leaders, like you all, who we think are here for our communities, vote against us by wanting to create jails, prisons and more police to harass and put more of our black and brown children in prisons. I will continue to fight for the rights of my communities because I know my communities best. I will continue to tell my story. I came to the United States as a refugee child. I know how hard it is for my people to go through the violence of war, escaping the jungles, leaving behind land, having to sacrifice family separations, all because of American imperialism. I remember my grandmother at age 92, when she was diagnosed with kidney failure, expressing to me how she had always fought for her life and only remember war growing up. And that she is tired and afraid of war. My mother, who is still shaken by fireworks on the Fourth of July because it reminds her of war. The experience of the refugee camp where I was born, as young as 45 years old, I still remember and have trauma hearing stories of war and experienced police violence in the camps of Thailand. I remember seeing people being chased, beaten just because they are trying to make a living by sneaking outside of the camp fence to go to work so that they can feed their families. Having curfews and just seeing people being harassed for no reasons other than police just wanting to lock up people. From the camps to the United States where we thought we were free, but to find out that we were not seen as real people in this country. One of the hardest times that my family had to face was when my brother was incarcerated. The separation of families was our biggest fear during the war and after the war, we still have to fear that. And now having to lose one more family member had affected the whole family financially and mentally. Living here in the United States today shouldn't feel this way, but I feel like war is never ending because too many black and brown childrens are facing police violence every day. Everything was never created for black and brown people. We as black and brown people know that police jails and prisons are not the solutions to bettering our children's future. I am asking all of you to reconsider, rethink, relearn and unlearn the unhealthy and healthy ways we can help black and brown children be successful by not just thinking about white kids as kids. Because I know that by putting police into schools and building jails will mostly target and create violence towards black and brown children. Please invest building more schools instead of new jails. Pay increase for all teachers and hire more teachers, counselors, social workers, more mental health services, free lunch for all students, free transportation for all students, air-conditioned schools, computers and many more instead of police in schools.
Thank you. Savan? And then Caleb.
Gloria, you got my name right.
I'm getting there.
Good job.
I'm getting there.
Good evening. My name is Savan. I am a youth advocate and also a gender justice advocate. I am here again to talk about your questionable decision regarding the MPD contract. I know that you are not listening to me with objectively. If you were to listen to us all with an objectively, you would have made changes in this a long time ago. This week, the news reports of Trump tweeting that, quote, "ICE will begin the process of removing the millions of illegal aliens who have illegally found their ways into the United States." I was once an illegal alien. My parents were forced out of their native homeland because of the US bombed Cambodia. I lost my father to this war at the age of three years old. We were living in refugee camps for many years. Many Cambodian families settled in the poor area around the USA. Growing up in the 80s and 90s, we didn't have any resources to turn into. My mother, who was a widow back then, raised seven kids all by herself and on welfare. We lived in a one-bedroom. We would go around alleyways to find beds and furnitures for our homes. Many of the Cambodian teenagers turned into gang members as a source of protection and belonging. Some of my friends got into trouble with authority just for making ends meet. We were heavily policed in our neighborhoods, constantly under the threat of being harassed and detained for whatever minor infractions or misunderstanding portrayed mainly by our limited understanding of what appropriate in our current culture surrounding. Now we are paying the price for just wanting to stay alive and get by. Everybody kept on talking about ICE Detention Center is a concentration camp, which they are. Jail and prison are concentration camps that destroy black youth. MMSD, as much as you care about immigrant children, you should also care for black children. I am asking, keep family together. Cambodian families were separated during the war and we are still healing from that loss. Deportation is not, deportation is just separating families, put big financial burdens on families. Deportation leave generational trauma to children. Police are no difference from ICE. They play a role in the school to the prison pipeline and they also separate families and harm the children. As a Khmer gender justice and youth advocate, I want to provide a safe space for my youth. I hear many harmful stories from my youth, the experience of bullying, harassing because of their race. Some of them are here today, which you just heard. We are here, we just want to invest in those who need it most, that is black, brown students, students with disability and LGBTQ plus. They are our most vulnerable students and need it most protection. We need to protect them and providing safe space and you know our three demands. Take cop out of school, invest in youth of color, provide their creativity and creative learning and also have control community. Have parents and students make decisions, be the decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Caleb and Jessica after Caleb.
Hello, can you guys hear me back there? Can people in the back hear me? Oh, okay. Well, first of all, I just want to say shout out to all the queer and trans people in here. There's so many of us. Happy Pride Month. I've been, I've been hella gay this month because it's Pride Month. So this Friday actually marks the 50th year anniversary of the Stonewall Uprising. And if you don't know what the Stonewall Uprising is, here's a short, a little short detail of what it was. So in the Greenwich Village in New York, they had venues that queer and trans people would gather and these venues would overcharge the liquor and, you know, whatever. It was expensive to be at and these places got raided by the police. The police raided these places because they were homophobic and they wanted to protect property over bodies. And that's what the police did. And police, police were never nice to queer and trans bodies. They would violently raid these places and they would violently arrest queer and trans people, especially gender nonconforming and trans folks. So, so shout out to all my queer folks in here. We're always moving and changing things. I say all of that to say because this city loves to celebrate pride. I mean, I see gay flags by the Capitol. But, you know, there's gays' flags and yay for equal marriage, right? But actually, this city actually doesn't really care about queer people because, you know, queer people need more than marriage, you know? I can't get married if I don't make enough money or, you know, have food to eat. And I say that because this city sets the tone for institutions, institutions like school. School says school is LGBTQ friendly, that one gender neutral bathroom in the far hallway does not make it safer for trans youth in school. And I say all this because police, police queer people, if you don't look normal, then you're police in school. It is not safe for queer youth to be in school. And I just want to reiterate that. No cops in school. Invest in youth of color, especially queer and trans youth and community control over school. And also I was inspired by Savan's story, so I want to say, most people have survived assimilation of Chinese people for thousands of years. We survived the French and we survived all the other folks who oppressed us, right? But we come to the United States, I'm a firstborn refugee and I don't even know how to speak my language. So you guys owe it to my people to teach them their own language and their own history. Invest in that.
Thank you. Jessica? Jessica? And then Hope.
Hey, y'all. I'm Jessica Williams with Freedom, Inc. And so every, every Monday, I spend a few hours speaking and working with a group of grandmothers. They range from the ages of 50 to 78 years old. They raise their own children and now help raising their grandchildren. We've spent countless sessions talking about the issues of police violence, police sexual assault and the violence that school police bring to children in schools. Across this group of grandmothers, they've experienced each of these forms of violence and if they haven't personally experienced one of these forms of violence, of police brutality and abuse, they know someone who has. And oftentimes, the person that they know is either their own child or their grandchild. In the very rare instance that one of these grandmothers hasn't experienced or witnessed these acts of violence directly, she certainly knows of neighbors, friends, the childrens of neighbors and friends and other people throughout the community who have. As they share their stories and recount the horrors they experienced in their youth, I can't help but to be angry that they never saw justice. And there are just so many stories to be told. Most of the time, we can't even get through all of the stories. By the time we get to the stories of their own children and grandchildren, you can feel the tension in the room, you can feel the despair, you can almost see people's pulses throbbing in the air. I remember one time telling them, you know, after our meetings on Mondays, there's a school board meeting that you all can come to and it would be really great to highlight your stories. One of the women said to me, Jessica, I am so tired. I went to those meetings and talked and talked and those people just do not listen to us. One of those women is here and she spoke earlier, Ms. Jewel. And I said to myself, damn, I should have known because black women are always the first ones to show up and they're always the first ones to get pushed out. But you all sit here and you would have us and you would have the rest of this community believe that black people don't care about their children and that we don't show up for anything in this community. This school board and this school administration are complete failures to my community. Most likely, none of you sat on the school board back then, but you've inherited a legacy of failure to the black community and you continue this legacy today in 2019. You continue a legacy of silencing the trauma, the trauma and pain and the courage of our community and you let it only be met with police violence. But we will not be silenced and until you remove cops from schools and until you invest in youth of color, we will show up, we will highlight every failure that belongs to you. We will tell every story that has not been heard and we will tell every story that has been ignored.
Thank you. Hope? We have Hope. Hope and then Shira. Shira?
Alright. Okay. So around this time last year, I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC and advocate on the Hill against mass roundups and deportations in the Southeast Asian community. I keep seeing memories on Facebook and it's been making me think a lot about the quote that everyone can agree on, keep families together. I'm thinking about this quote because last night I started this really amazing show on Netflix, When They See Us, depicting very real and accurate ways police, the police, the court system, the media and the broader American society tears black and brown families apart. I believe in keeping families together and I'm sure you all agree with that, correct? But ask yourself, but ask yourself what you're actually doing to ensure that in your hands an MMSD, that black and brown families are not being funneled into a cycle of family separation. When the police are in schools, they hand out a ridiculous amount of citations to black students, to black children. These citations are their tickets to the prison system. I'm not sure if you forgot, but black and brown people come from predominantly poor communities, leading to unpaid citations. And as you know, unpaid citations lead to trips to the courtroom, to juvie and eventually to prison. What are students being cited for, you ask? As a school board, it's your job to know because it's your district. But I'll give you the facts anyway. According to MPD, 43% of citations at MMSD high schools are due to truancy, followed by disorderly conduct and unlawful trespass and a few months of battery and casual possession of cannabis in public places. It's your job to find out why truancy is such a big issue, especially because it is predominantly- predominantly disproportionately punishing black and brown students. Are they late because they have to take the city bus, which often runs behind schedule? Are they missing class because the school environment makes them feel uncomfortable and unsafe? Are they missing class because the material being taught is not relevant to the issues they're actually facing outside of school? Are they missing class because their parents have to work two jobs respectively to make a living wage and to support their families, and the student has to make sure their younger siblings are making it to school on time? The school board needs to be asking the right questions and find solutions. When Kate, Mary, Chris, and Gloria, who shouldn't have but did, vote for the renewal of the contract between MMSD and MPD, you voted for police brutality, you voted for racist policies, you voted for the failure of black and brown children, you voted to funnel more black and brown students into the school-to-prison pipeline, you voted to treat black and brown bodies like trash you dump on the side of the street for the garbage man to pick up. You are what's wrong with white liberal Madison, and only you have the power to end the contract with MPD. So only you can be held accountable when another student is forced into the school-to-prison pipeline. Only you can be held accountable when another student is assaulted by a police officer. Only you can be held accountable for the young lives you put at stake every day that you don't end that contract. And think about this every second of every day, because I promise you that every little black and brown child is thinking whether or not someone in their family or themselves will be assaulted by a police officer every second of every day.
Shira?
Shira.
Shira. Shira, and then MT after that.
Can you all hear me? Okay. We told you over and over that cops make us feel unsafe, and yet again, y'all failed us. What don't y'all get? We told y'all our stories and others. We repeat the same thing over and over because we care about our schooling system, that our kids will be in. Kids should not fear for their lives at all. I know kids that are still in high school, and that tells me how many, how much they don't want cops in schools. When they slam them to the ground just because they get into an argument, how they get a ticket just because they're late, and now they have to worry about a ticket that they can't pay. When I got into a fight in high school with a white boy, they grabbed me first and twisted my arms. A year later, the cop came up to me and said, no harm feelings? I looked at him and laughed. And he said, I quote, "At least I didn't give you a ticket like your other friends." Cops never, cops never make me feel safe, and never will I ever have a damn relationship with them. I've been racially profiled many times, walking while black. I would never feel safe in schools with cops. We have three demands, which I'm pretty sure if y'all ain't gonna, y'all ain't gonna have them out of schools, do not use these. The first one is, we don't want cops in schools. We want to get them out of schools and have it to be a safe place. Second, invest into youth of colors and not cops. So the $360,000 that will be going to cops, invest into Freedom, Inc., so that we can train folks to understand what's going on. Last, community control over school safety. Let the youth of color have control over restorative justice circles instead of suspending them and taking them away from schooling. You are opposing white supremacy. By keeping them in schools, you are doing the same exact thing that the white folks and the police were doing in the 40s. They only put police in schools so they can keep black and brown youth out of schools and make them feel uncomfortable, and that's exactly what y'all are doing. We don't want any cops. We never, I never see my peers, my siblings, or I have a relationship with some cop that is trained to shoot first and ask questions later.
MT, and then Cashwa.
I'm upset that the Madison School District is investing money into police but not into students of color. We have seen how badly these police have been treating our kids, and yet these people on the school board thinks that having police in our schools will make the school environment safer. It only takes tiny steps to put these kids to where they need to be. Stop using the police as an excuse for them to handle the kids that you call cause trouble, or bad kids. Police are not there to solve these kids' problems. They isolate the kids' problems. The people that should be solving these kids' problems are counselors, but not just any counselors. They must be culturally specific so that they can relate to the kids easily and know what they are going through, and work with them in ways that are safe for the kids. Especially when we see how police are treating kids with disability. Kids with disabilities should not be treated less than a human being. We saw what happened to the 17-year-old student from West High School who got punched by one of the four police officers that came to his house just because he left school from having a mental illness crisis. This makes me feel uneasy because it makes me think about my brothers. Since they were little, the whole system labeled them as disabled, but I grew up with them, and I know that they are not disabled. The teachers failed each of my brother's education by passing them through classes when they did not actually know the materials because they need numbers to reach. I fear that in the future, my brothers might not get proper jobs just because they don't know how to count money and read in English. How can I trust that what happened to a 17-year-old student from West High School doesn't happen to my brothers who are also labeled as disabled in this system? I ask that you all take this money being invested in police and give it to people who will actually give their students proper education. Invest this money into teachers who will be patient with students so that they each know how to read and do simple math, or teach students stuff that will actually need to, or teach students stuff they will actually need in the future, instead of putting these kids into easy classes and expect them to learn by going back and repeat the classes over and over again. Police are not teachers, they're not counselors, they're not nurses, so keep police out of our education.
Thank you. We got Cashwa next. Is Cashwa in the room? And then after Cashwa, we got Zom.
Hello? Okay. It's hard to hear back there, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's, yeah, it's okay. My name is Cashwa, and I think in light of everything, I'd like to talk about Freedom, Inc. Since I'm the one who started Freedom, Inc., I think that there's this misconception about who we are, and I can tell you that I started it in 1999, when I was about 25 years old. And when I started it, we were actually up against the loitering ordinance at the city that was coming up for sunset. And the reason why a few of us decided to organize against that was that it was disproportionately impacting poor people of color, especially Southeast Asian men and Black men in the community, because we were hanging out, and if there was more than three of you hanging out, the police had every right to stop you. And so as communities that didn't have a backyard, they would hang out in the parking lot, and they would get arrested. And so I started organizing. We did about 20, about 100 surveys, and found out that everybody who had been stopped by the police, there was no citation. So there was heavy racial profiling happening in the Southeast Asian community. The reason why I say that is, I want to tell you all that cops in school is a Southeast Asian issue. Cops in school is a Latino issue. And the reason why I want to tell you about Freedom, Inc. is, just because people think that we're rowdy and we're out here and all these articles, let me tell you who Freedom, Inc. is. It is 70, it is 80-year-old grandmothers. It is 80-year-old trans Mung men, women. It is six-year-old babies. It is 500 people that we serve. It is all of the South Side black and Cambodian people coming through for food pantry on Fridays. It is elders who take the bus to Freedom, Inc. to get food. No matter the weather, they show up. It is the domestic violence victim survivor who is running in the middle of the night, and we're picking them up. It is the family whose father just killed himself and his best friend, and the whole kids that we're serving. It is my mother, it is your mother, it is in all of the Kamai communities, it is everybody in that community. In the Mung community, I can tell you, not one family have not come through for services at Freedom, Inc. We have a base. Who you see today are just those who have courage to come out and speak. So this is not a ploy, this is not me brainwashing people. This is about 20 years of service in this community. This is about speaking for... Oh, I say that to say, I say that to say because I think that there's this misconception about who we are. If you understand what it takes to build a person, when they walk through the door for services, to where they can stand up here and tell you that I don't want cops in schools and it impacts my life, to bring somebody from that place to be able to speak to you, that's 10 years of investment in a person. I know what it takes to build community. So when I come and speak here, I'm not, I'm not here to destroy community. I know what it takes to build community. I know what it takes to build students. I say that to say, cops out of school. People may think, oh, you guys got it wrong, the target's wrong, everybody's racist, cops is just a small portion. They are the watchdogs of the racist systems. And as long as they are watchdogs, I don't want them near my kids. I don't want them near your kids. So last thing I'm going to say, I know I'm out of time, last thing I'm going to say is, how do we get the world to say and care about policing in our community like everybody is now caring about ICE in our community? If we say, I know people are going to be upset, ICE get the fuck out of our communities, we're saying, the police should get the fuck out of our communities too.
We got Zom, and then M.
Hi, my name is Jean-Moore. I am a longtime resident here in Madison and also alumni of the school district. So first off, with what Cashwa was saying, is that I am that product of 10 years of investment. I am that product, right? The school ain't do shit for me. The school never saw me as a leader, and it was really Cashwa and Freedom, Inc. that really poured into me and said, you have something there. Let's figure that out. And that changed my whole entire life. That's what you all should be doing, but instead, this is what you are doing. Turning these kids into property of MMSD. Dane County just approved a youth prison and the building of a new county jail, and then you all pass this contract to have cops in your school. You're pushing kids into the school-to-prison pipeline with citations and arrests. In 2015, 15, 16 school year, black students made up 18% of the entire high school district, but black high school students with disabilities were 76 times more likely to be arrested at the schools. Shame on you. And black girls were 100%, 100% of the middle school girls arrested by the cops at school. Shame. Do you really not see them as little girls? In 2017-18, black students were 87% of school-based arrests. That's 27 of the 31 arrests. In 2017-18, black students were 82% of school-based citations. That's 65 of 79 citations. And guess what? No white girl got a citation. Why is that? An MMSD spends roughly $2 million in salaries and benefits related to school policing and security, which disproportionately impacts black students. I could go on and on with these stats. You all should be ashamed of yourself. Do better. Seriously, do better.
Thank you.
My time's not up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were...
Yes. And you should be sorry for all the students that you're locking up also. So that means you all better stop that contract. You all are responsible for every citation, every arrest, every police encounter. We will be watching you.
Thank you. M? M, and then after M, we have Bob is a Schuster? Schaefer, maybe? Yeah, Schaefer, I'm sorry. So M, and then Bob Schaefer.
All right, my name is M. Adams. I'm co-executive director of Freedom, Inc. Shout out to all the black folks here. Much love to Neshia, I don't know where she went, but much love to Neshia and her leadership and really organizing black folks to get together and have a conversation around black excellence. So shout out to that. Also, shout out for teachers who are demanding a living wage. I think it's a crying shame that people who are responsible for developing our children don't get paid enough, and frankly, have to work more than one job. That's such an important job, they should be able to just focus on that and do that well, and have more than enough resources to do it. And I really hope that you all are not paying more for cops than you're paying teachers. And about that, quickly, shout out Freedom, Inc., shout out to Cashwa to what she said. And one of the things that we know how to do at Freedom, Inc. is budget. And I'm sure everybody in this room knows how much I make now, but along that lines, we know how to teach you how to pay people more. And so we are more than willing to use our expertise toward actually building a budget that pays equitably. We believe in pay equity, so here's that. So quickly, it is anti-black to be against deportations, but not incarceration. Both are considered crimes, both are considered illegal, or people, you know, both in theory have done illegal things to experience either one of those traumatic things. And incarceration separates families just like deportations does. I'm 33, and my father has been in prison 28 of those years, 29 of those years. He's got about 15 left, and I hope he doesn't die in there. So if anybody knows about the separation of a family due to a system, it's me. I lost a parent, I am now parentless because my mother is not living. So I know exactly what it means to face a separation of a family. And if my father was incarcerated because he was trying to escape poverty, similar to how people migrate because they're trying to escape poverty, and an immigrant person crosses an arbitrary line that the government says is wrong to do, and they lock them up for that, then my father should not be locked up for crossing an arbitrary line because he tried to provide for his family and do what he had to do. And so again, we cannot be against ICE, we cannot be against deportation, and also support incarceration. To do so is to be anti-black, and we need to be pro-black in our thinking. And then so, the last thing that I want to just... And then so the last thing that I want to just point out is how the schools and police in particular do not see Black children as human. So as I watched that video of that seventeen-year-old, I thought to myself, what would I do if I were hooded? What would I do if there were bodies on top of me and I was hooded? Of course I would jerk. I would, I would, I would tense up, I would jerk, I probably would scream, maybe I would try to bite. And when that young seventeen-year-old child was scared for his life, what he received in that moment was three hard punches in the face by a grown man. And I thought any adult who sees that would be outraged, would be outraged at the idea that a, one, that a child could be hooded by strangers, by grown men and punched in the face several times. And if I could understand how I, as a grown adult with maturity and development, could respond to such fear and freeze up and tense up, then how could we not see that that could be true for that child? And the reason why we don't see it true for that child is because we do not see him as human. If we thought he was human, then we would see that as wrong. If we thought he was human, then we would understand that when Black people are grabbed by the police, of course your body moves. When I think of that, I think of Eric Garner. When they said, how could Eric Garner move when he was being choked? What do you mean the body moves when being choked? I thought of Janelle Laird a few years ago at, uh, East Town Mall who was tased and brutalized and hooded by the officer and his response was that she moved. Of course you move when someone is attacking you. But see, that's what humans do. Humans move. Humans fight back. Humans want to live. And it, and so it was so clear to me that they did not see him as a human. That they thought he was a thing to be killed, that they thought he was a thing worth killing. And anyone who defends that video sees the same thing. And I'm, and I'm fearful for that Black child because he has to go back to West High School. And when he goes back to West High School, officer creature's still there. And you are asking a human to be in the same room as someone who just orchestrated an attack like that against them. If you believe Black children are human, fuck what those few Black people say who say they like cops, just like I say, fuck immigrants who say they like ICE. Right? Fuck them. And get them out of school. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob Shaffer. I know. Alex? Bob Shaffer?
Yes, thank you. Yes, my name is Bob Shaffer and yes, I am white. I can't help that, that's how I was born. Uh, so, uh, we all are in that same situation and in my world, I think that's a good thing because for me, it adds diversity to my life and it adds the opportunity to get to know and experience other cultures. One of the reasons that we are here today is because we are wanting to provide the best opportunity for our young children. And I say "our" because it takes a village to raise a child. So our children are why we are here today. What our children are going to grow up in is our children are going, going to grow up in a world that is diverse. They are going to grow up in, have jobs in a diverse area. So in my fifty-one-year career, that I have had the opportunity to work with people who are Black, people who are brown, Hmong, uh, people who are, uh, yellow, and I have learned a lot from them and I have also taught them many things and it's been a beneficial experience. So what we need to look at today is how can we achieve that? In my opinion, we achieve that by helping us to become, hi, how are you doing today? He's important. And so how do we achieve that today? Yeah, you can sit in there if you want. That's fine. As, as long as it's okay with your mom. Is it okay? Okay. So, now we are here today to look to see how can we prepare our young children to go into the world of adult and the world of jobs. In that world, we will not have the opportunity to all be working with people who look like us or learn from people who look like us. So we need to diversify. We need to learn how we can help our children become successful. And we do that by working with people to help them experience the uniqueness and the individuality. I cannot know what it's like to grow up as any of you. At seventy-eight years, seventy-nine years old, that I have had a lot of life experiences that many of you are yet to have in your own way. So what we need to do is we need to share those. And that, one of the, I guess I'm done.
Thank you. Alex Alvarado. After Alex, we have Sonia Worthy.
I think maybe your mom is looking for you. No, she's not? Oh, great.
Hello? My name is Alex Alvarado. And cops do not belong in schools. Safety is a human right. And schools are safe, are supposed to be safe spaces for children and students and kids. Luckily, I'm white passing, I'm Hispanic, but I'm white passing, so I experience white privilege. And I have friends who are Black and Brown who do not. And for them to have to go to school and not be able to put their full focus into becoming a great student and to getting a good education and have to worry about their I mean, what does that say? School is a place for education and to build community. And throughout history, police and police systems have broken down communities. Cops do not belong in schools.
Thank you. Sonia Worthy. After Sonia, we have Sawyer Johnson. Sawyer Johnson.
Hi, everybody. My name's Sonia Worthy and I'm a mental health community social worker. And a lot of my job involves listening, as you can probably imagine. Then the time that I listen most attentively is when people are angry or frustrated because I know that just behind that anger is deep hurt. Recently, Freedom Inc. has come under attack for publicly expressing their hurt and anger about their violent experiences with police. Community members are quick to label Freedom Inc. youth and adult leaders as unnecessarily angry and aggressive, which is some deeply racist-coded language. Because what that really means is, y'all shouldn't be angry because there's nothing to be angry about. Your experiences are not real and we don't believe you. This is the definition of gaslighting. The community and many members of the board refuse to acknowledge the hurt and love and righteous anger that propels this campaign. And this is being mirrored in our schools. I think about how we treat children who are learning how to work through emotions like hurt and anger. And I think about how white children are often given this space to process these difficult emotions. We give so many chances to white children. We give them so much space because ultimately, we believe white children. So when Black children are working through anger and hurt, they are often punished, criminalized, and seen as dangerous because we don't believe Black children. We don't believe that their experiences are real. But Freedom Inc. believes Black children. And if the school board believed Black children, the board would have unanimously voted to keep cops out of school. Right? But four of you voted to keep cops in school. Four of you are more invested in keeping the status quo than keeping Black youth safe. And I also wanted to talk directly to Chris. Your vote to keep EROs in schools was just another example of why Black people are distrustful of white women who say Black lives matter. Of white women who say they support Black children. Because when it comes right down to it, you don't. No cops in school.
Thank you. Sawyer Johnson. Then Laurel Bastian.
Hey, y'all. My name is Sawyer Johnson, pronouns they, them, and theirs. I've been living in the Madison community for the past three years and I've been a youth worker for the past eight years. Um, and I wanted to say first, obviously, no cops in schools, right? Thank you. Um, and I also wanted to address the last meeting since I think people have talked about bits and pieces of it, but nobody's really given an overview unless we're all keeping up on the news and even not necessarily a clear report. Um, so I sat in the back at the last meeting, um, which was called, I think, two or three days in advance, didn't have public comments, and there was no discussion about voting to renew the ERO contract. Um, so I wanted to say thank you to the people on the board who voted against that contract with the Madison Police Department and that is Ali, Ananda, and Nikki. Um, and what we know, yes, thank you, yes. Um, and what we know about Ali, Ananda, and Nikki is that they can relate a lot into the folks who are most targeted by police in schools or teachers who might engage by using police in schools. So thank you for your bravery in being willing to risk that. And also directly to Kate, Mary, and Chris, I wonder what it looks like or would have looked like for you to use your whiteness, uh, to support your colleagues of color on the Board of Directors, especially since some of you have talked about racism during your campaigns, such as Chris. Um, yep. I also wanted to acknowledge the Black and Hmong youth who have been organizing to get those few no votes for a couple of years. Um, those no votes wouldn't have happened without direct action from Black and Hmong youth. So that shows that direct action works. So keep up the fabulous work and thank you. Uh, lastly, since we've talked a little bit about folks who voted to continue the contract with the Madison Police Department, I wanted to talk a little bit about what their lived experiences actually look like. Um, and since the meeting's been going on for a while, I did a, a quick Google search and found out that back when Mary Burke was elected to the board, uh, she spent a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars on her campaign. Hundred and eight, twenty-eight thousand dollars. I make forty thousand a year. So I wonder what it might look like, Mary, if you were willing to put some of that money towards the youth organizers who have showed up consistently for the past three years to demand no cops in schools. Um, I also saw in another quick Google search that there's a woman, woman in the Dane County jail right now whose bail is two hundred dollars. So my challenge to you, Mary, and feel free to post it on Facebook, would be, post that woman's bail or put some money towards Freedom Inc. because we all know you got it. Thanks.
Thank you. Laurel Bastian. Is Laurel Bastian in the room? Laurel Bastian. All right. That was our last public comment. Thank you all for speaking tonight. Uh, let's go ahead and take a few minute, like, three-minute break and then we'll reconvene. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and start with the Board President's announcements and reports. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Chris Carusi. She's got an announcement to make.
Since Saturday, educators, students, and community members from across Wisconsin have been marching sixty miles from Palmyra to Madison to demand a better budget for our kids. MMSD Board of Education members will join the Stand Up for Public Schools March tomorrow afternoon at East High School. We are proud to stand up for our kids and our public schools alongside teachers, families, students, and school board members from across the state.
Great, thank you. Uh, Food for Success Coalition strives to end hunger in MMSD community. The Board recognizes the Food for Thought Initiative, Selfless Ambition, and the River Food Pantry for forming the Food for Success Coalition this very month. The Coalition is a collaborative effort to end hunger for MMSD students and the families in the Madison community as a whole. All three organizations have successfully run food pantries in community and in our schools. And now with the Coalition, there will be an even more effective and equitable path for students and families to have access to food. The Board recognizes and humbly appreciates each person involved in the newly-formed Food for Success Coalition in each organization for partnering together, which better serves our schools and our community. Centennial Celebration of Women Suffrage in Wisconsin, this month of June marks the hundred, hundred-year anniversary of Wisconsin Women Suffragettes, successfully being one of the first states to ratify the Nineteenth Amendment in Wisconsin on June tenth, nineteen nineteen, giving women the right to vote. In eighteen forty-eight, prior to the Civil War, women across the country had begun to organize and collectively fight for suffrage. The multiple generations of suffrage organizers marched, lobbied, and protested, all, all while facing harsh criticism, threats, and acts of abuse and violence, and even incarceration during the long, vigorous, multi-decade journey resulting in the successful ratification of the U.S. Constitution. Although the Nineteenth Amendment could not guarantee the right to vote for all women, most notably women of color in the South, the achievements of these heroic women marked the beginning of the first major victory for women's rights in the United States. One hundred years later, it is hard to imagine the personal sacrifices that these women made by facing so much adversity to reach their ultimate goal. As we are aware, many of the same challenges and the suffrage faced are still existent today in the fight for women's rights. Their journey paved the way for so many women today and have the same strength and courage to seek positive change. Thank you. All right, so, uh, next we have the Superintendent's announcements and report. And we'll start with the Blacks, Black Excellence Coalition recommendations.
All right, thank you, Gloria. I'd love to invite members of the Black Excellence Coalition to join me. Um, and we'll get started in just a minute. All right. Um, I am really pleased to, um, uh, invite this subset of members from the Black Excellence Coalition to speak with the Board tonight. I want to thank them, I want to thank the expanded group. Um, back when we launched our strategic framework over a year ago and made a commitment to Black excellence, we made a commitment to working alongside members of the Black community, centering the voices of the people, um, who are most experiencing some of the challenges that we face. Black students, uh, their parents, and Black staff. Um, when we put those words on paper, we had, uh, some kind of picture of how this coalition would form, but we weren't sure exactly, uh, what, what that would end up being like and looking like. And it's been, um, I think, a really wonderful thing. And I want to congratulate and acknowledge Nichelle Nichols, her leadership. Um, I think the fact that this coalition is no longer words on paper, but a real group that has made a real commitment to working alongside us is, uh, incredible and it's a testament, uh, to our community that these leaders have stepped up to support us in making Black excellence not just a concept, but a reality. Um, so with that said, I'm gonna hand it over to Nichelle, uh, who's gonna walk us through this presentation with the support of, uh, the people who are here tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I first want to start this presentation... I don't know. All right. Thank you. I'm all jacked up tonight. All right. I want to... I got it. Thank you, Barb. All right. I want to first start this presentation just by taking a moment to honor the namesake for this school, Reverend James C. Wright. For those who don't know, Reverend Wright was originally born in South Carolina, and after completing education at Virginia Union University Education in Theology and Philosophy at Payne AME and Wilberforce University, he and his wife Jackie moved to Madison, Wisconsin in the early 1960s, and he also completed a degree here in psychology at UW-Madison. He and his wife Jackie established a business, one of the first Black-owned barber and beauty shops, called Jackie and Jimmy's Beauty and Barber Shops. And Reverend Wright was a civil rights pioneer in Madison. He worked during the 1960s to bring about the adoption of the city of Madison's Equal Opportunities Ordinance. He served as a member of the Equal Opportunities Commission prior to his appointment as the Executive Director for the Equal Opportunities Commission, and he retired in 1992 after 24 years of dedicated service to the city of Madison. He was also an Associate Minister at Mount Zion Baptist Church under the late Reverend Joey Dawson from 1960 until 1984, and then from 1990 until his death, Reverend Wright served as a full-time pastor at Mount Zion Baptist Church, the largest African-American church in Dane County. We wanted to just put and speak his name in the room tonight because, one, we feel that it's very timely and relevant that our update tonight on Black excellence is in a school named after a local icon and somebody who gave tirelessly to make this community better. Tonight's presentation really is about bringing the document, which includes the recommendations, to life, so I'm just going to spend a few moments getting us grounded. Really, this reminder is more for our audience than anyone, but in our current strategic framework, as you can see, Goal Three is a goal specifically focused on African-American children and youth to excel in school, and that is a commitment that the district has made. In addition, the district has committed to a core set of values, and we believe that these values, in particular, support the recommendations that are coming forward tonight. Specifically, two values: voice, and voice is stated as, "We seek out and elevate the voices of all in our community with special attention to the influence and leadership of our students, staff, and families of color." We believe that the work that we've been doing to build coalition has definitely been a value of voice actualized, and then lastly, the value of racial equity and social justice. As stated, it says, "We will take responsibility for the ways that our current policies and practices serve to reproduce inequities, and we will take action to close the gaps in opportunity that lead to racialized outcomes for children and youth of color." And this commitment to Black excellence is certainly us moving through our values. Really quickly, when the Madison School District this year made a commitment to Black excellence, we did not define Black excellence, because we knew that it could mean a variety of things to folks. But we did lead with some strong language around it. It began with mindsets and beliefs. You have to believe that Black excellence already exists. It's already there. Maybe you haven't seen it, you don't know it, but it does exist. And so we signaled the importance of mindsets and beliefs, and we also knew that the way that we were going to find new solutions for our Black students in the school district was to be... was going to take being in true, authentic partnership with our families, with our communities, and with students and staff, and that we would find all of the solutions that we needed. Lastly, Black excellence, at least from the district perspective, does take in a multi-pronged approach. What we're focusing on tonight is in the upper left-hand corner, which is called the Community Coalition. It's an intentional, an intentional and inclusive act to partner. It is not an afterthought. It is by design at the very beginning of what we've done, and if there's going to be any definition, any future strategies, it will be done through the partnership and the coalition, because we believe that's where the wisdom sits. It has also included this year a commitment to new narratives about our Black students. So our communications team has gone out and found students, lifted up really positive, beautiful stories about them, and that has been one of the ways this year that we have been working on really combating negative stereotypes that we often hear about our Black students and families in the media. We know that there will be key efforts around tracking our work across teaching and learning to focus on the metrics of the goal. And then lastly, we really can't achieve Black excellence without being focused on our educators and all of our, all of our district employees being supported and trained in becoming anti-racist culturally responsive educators. So that's kind of our multi-pronged approach. And now, I would love for our, our members here at the table to introduce themselves. I do want to just recognize that everyone that has participated in meetings, we've had coalition meetings, and we've had think tank meetings, are not present at the table today. I want to thank you all for being here, sticking it out through all of our public comments, which were incredibly powerful. We did have members that were here earlier, some of whom have left, but, you know, really, my hope is that everybody will hear that this is a collective approach, and that the voices are varied, they're rich. And yeah, so let me pass it off to folks at the table to introduce themselves.
I'm... Ooh, that's louder. Hey, y'all. I'm Brandy Grayson, Executive Director of Urban Triashe.
I'm Michael Fogye, a parent.
Good evening, everybody. I am Daniel Kiguer, a proud MMSD graduate, Madison West, class of '97. I have three students that are also in the district, and I'm also a school principal here at Senate Middle School.
Good evening. My name is Camaro Stovall. I'm also a West graduate, class of '95. I'm a parent of three, one graduating last year. I have one here and one at Memorial next year. And lastly, I'm... well, not lastly, but I'm a 20-year teacher in Madison, and I'm proud to be here.
My name is Vanessa McDowell. I'm the CEO of YWCA Madison. We partner with the school district to do restorative justice work in the schools.
Good evening. My name is Pranisha Clifton, and I am the Director of Pre-Collage Youth Program Compliance with the University of Wisconsin, and I'm the one that sees the other end of that pathway when those students don't end up in college. And we have the ability now to see their excellence and to make sure that they're ready for life, and that's why I'm here.
Hi. My name is Mary Ann Slaughter. I am with the Natural Circles of Support with this intervention in various schools, actually, across the state.
Hello. So we wanted to get into the purpose of our presentation, and mainly, it's to be open and transparent with the community and both the Board about what we want to do. And not only that, to get the commitment from the Board and the same desire that we have to see Black excellence. And the thing is, is that Black excellence is not the exception, it's the norm. But we have to allow our children to be normal. Part of being a child is making a mistake and learning, but when they're in the school system and not allowed to be children and make mistakes and learn from them, they never get to that level of Black excellence. So with this coalition, our goal is to center our voices around Black students, because it's one thing to listen, but it's another thing to hear them and actually make these changes. The other thing is that we want to be engaged with Black families, and we want to be engaged with Black staff, so that our youth have the proper support to be successful and get ready for life. And then, at the end, we want to be able to use metrics to justify what we're asking for from both the school board and the families. Now, you're saying, what are we asking for from the school board in order to achieve this goal of Black excellence? We expect that our time is valued. We are all volunteers on this Board with very specific subject matter expertise that can really turn around what's happening at this district right now. But in order for us to give our time, we need to know it's valued. So we want to be able to have influence and/or review policy as it comes through, as it pertains to Black children. And that means that if we have influence and say, our Black children and our Black families will have a say too. We don't want this to just be one thing that we do for say and say, hey, Black excellence, and then we walk away from it. We want this to be a part of the regular agenda. Anytime a school has a failure, anytime a school district has a failure, it's not enough to just look at it once. We want to know how it's been remediated. Next thing, we want to be able, over time, to evaluate and improve our recommendations. We know that this is new for this district and that we have to be malleable and adapt to some of the constraints that the, that the school district puts in for, in front of us. And number four, we want to be a budget priority. It's not enough for you just to say today, we're going to give $350,000, of which $250,000 cannot even be used in the school where the oppression, where the racism, and where the lived trauma is happening. But that's another thing. We want to be able to have a say on how this budget is used, and that it can effectively go towards working with the youth. So it's not a one-time thing. This is a lifetime investment that we expect from the school board, because this problem is not going to go away overnight. Last but not... well, we have two more. One, we want to work with you. We believe that we can help you as MMSD to develop the proposals and the ideas needed to do this work better. You know, people are like, oh, well, we'll figure it out because we're on the school board, or we know how to protect these youth from trauma. But I challenge any of you educators in the audience right now to think about, was youth protection or protecting youth from trauma part of your academic curriculum as a teacher? Right? And so we need somebody in the room that can step up for the voices that cannot be heard and protect them. Last but not least, we want to help the youth to hold this district accountable for their experiences and the outcome of their experiences in MMSD. Thank you.
All right. We sent in a document, which I know is in Board Docs, that included the recommendations and included a little bit in the beginning about who the coalition has shaped out to be up to this point, and that work is still going to continue, who was invited to be part of the think tank, and then also included some direct quotes from students who responded to a survey on how they view Black excellence. What we're going to do in this period right now is, we're not going to go through every recommendation line by line, because we sent in the document, and we want to leave time for any questions or comments that you may have. But we are going to have each person on here speak to, kind of a summary of one of the major categories of the recommendations, so that we can bring the document to life, and you can literally feel like the voice and the love and the lived experience that comes in with that recommendation. And then we will kind of wrap it up there and then open it up for any questions or comments. Okay? So we are going to kind of go in order, so invest in Black students.
Good evening. Just a little bit of history. Investments that Madison has made, that I can recall, African-American Ethnic Academy was one that can come to mind, and what enriched, how that helped the children that were involved in that. And that was just a minor investment that the district took place in, and they made great growth in that investment. Another one that I can think about is the Stars Summer Program. The district made a minor investment in that, and it helps children, hundreds of children. I think it's been about 30 years that the district has partied in that, that investment. The district has also made major investments, kind of like in the, with the ELL department. And they, we have funded that department, and I think they've, they've made leaps and bounds and great success with that, with that major investment. So now, we're here today, we have an investment, which is good, because compared to the past, we really didn't have anything to stand on, but we do have an initial investment. But now we need to get ready for the major investment that we need for Black excellence. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we have invested in things that have been successful in the past, but some of those were minor investments. But then when we make major investments in things like ELL, I think we make great strides. So I'm thinking like, if we, if we're wanting to do some comparison about what type of investment needs to be made for Black excellence, we can look towards that, so.
Just keep going. I am here to talk about addressing discipline and disproportionality. So as we've talked about a lot tonight, and we've heard in public comment, the disproportionality of how students of color are disproportionately basically outcast, and how they are treated differently in the schools when it comes to cops in schools and things of that nature. So I want to point out what Freedom Make has clearly pointed out to us in statistics that you see on the wall. I also want to point out what my man who's gone already, but Taron, had said in regards to his experience of just graduating from West High School, and him feeling like he also didn't appreciate the cops in the school and his experience with that. And then also just pointing out, what can we do differently, and what are the things that, sort of accountability as well, which we'll talk about later, when it comes to disproportionality. The other thing is, as YWCA, we provide restorative justice, and as Tawan had pointed out earlier, there's a lot of underfunded support in the schools. So as we are increasing the support for police in schools, that means that something else is getting cut, which is the support in schools. And so one of the things that we're passionate about is, how do we increase the support for students of color in schools, Black students particularly? And as Brandy had brought to light about parents being in school, I had an experience when I, when I go to the school sometimes to visit and talk with some of the kids that are doing restorative justice, just my presence alone makes a difference. I had so many Black girls coming up to me and saying, "You work here?" And I was like, "No." But I talked about the work that I do and just representation, and how it matters. And so to see us more in schools and see our presence more in schools, I know will support our kids, and I know as a way that we'll be able to change some of these demographics. And so really stressing the importance of being able to support the work that is working. And we haven't even seen the full capacity of what restorative justice could be, because it hasn't been funded to its capacity. So what are those programs and things that are being done, or what are those philosophies and mindsets that need to change, that can change the school's culture, so that we do meet this goal of belonging for our Black kids?
And on the other side of the budget, we want to make sure, once again, that it's a continued investment, and that it's not enough to fund it in an out-of-class setting. Because once again, it's unfortunate that we have to teach people how to see Black children as just children, or to see them as individuals in general. But that requires education, that requires reprogramming, and so we expect a consistent investment, which includes investing in those responsible for these behaviors, and then also involving the youth in this process. We want to be able to invest in the programs in which they find valuable and to hear their voices.
Hi. I'll speak to the recommendation, which is change curriculum and enhance community roles in Black history. Madison has most definitely taken on trying to reform curriculum, right? We all know that. What's important to consider is not only addressing the content and making sure that it actually addresses lived experiences of Black folks, not just historically, but in the present, but it's actually addressing socio-emotional... the social-emotional space. You cannot learn if you don't feel safe. That's fundamental. You can't separate those two. So that's, that's fundamental to that curriculum, to the idea of changing the curriculum, reforming the curriculum, whatever language we want to use. And then the other point that I can speak to personally, working with some eighth-grade girls over at O'Keefe, African-American girls, who spoke so passionately... girls over at O'Keefe, African-American girls, who spoke so passionately about their desire to receive the breadth, the depth of their history. It's, some of these girls were considered unsuccessful, and yet they were able to deconstruct and question and bring their rich experience, even at eighth grade, to the, um, the black excellence statement. They, they feel that they need to know and understand where they're coming from in the fullest sense of the word to be successful. That's foundational.
Uh, there's so much that I could say about my experience on the Black Excellence Coalition. But I, I will definitely say this. Um, I said earlier that I was a proud graduate of Madison West, um, but I also know that I left a lot of my black and brown brothers and sisters behind, and they weren't successful. But the thing that I can, um, honestly say is that we are on to something special here. The initial investment in black excellence was actually calling it out and putting it in the strategic framework. And that is the first time, as somebody that's been a part of this Madison community for a long time, that I said, we are taking a bold step. As a parent and as an educator here in Madison, I have been able to hear from our students, and many of them have come and challenged, uh, the board on some of their decisions, right? But that, that, that is also a testament to their leadership, their excellence, right? And their future potential, right? And their current potential. One of the things that I've heard them say, um, is that we need to have more teachers of color in our schools, and we need to invest in that. And thank you to the board for, uh, creating the position, the recruitment, um, and marketing coordinator. That is definitely gonna help with bringing in more highly, uh, trained and certified teachers of color. But I'm also requesting, um, because this is what has been said to me, uh, we have to think about new innovative ways of getting those young people, the Tarrons of the world, to be part of that group that comes, and they, they become our future educators. Our future teachers for MMSD are right there in, in our classrooms right now and have graduated from, um, our high schools, and we need to tap into that. The other thing that has come about from our conversations is making sure that the teachers that are before our students right now, um, are trained, that they have the tools and they are equipped to put curriculum in front of the students that is culturally relevant, right? That they are able to see the excellence of those students that are before them right now, and in particular, our black students. And we are gonna continue that conversation. We are asking the board, right, to continue despite, uh, us losing, uh, Dr. Cheetum and that leadership, to invest and continue invest in that idea of black excellence for our kids by focusing on human resource and professional development for our teachers. It's what our community is asking for.
Well, um, I'm talking on or speaking on support for families. In order to support black families, in order to support black excellence, you actually have to know how racism works. So I, I'm, I'm part of this coalition because I respect the initiative, I respect the work that's being attempted. Um, but we spend $38,000 per kid to incarcerate them, and we spend $11,000 per kid to educate them, meaning with $350,000, we can help 31 kids. And $100,000 can only be used in schools and $250,000 outside of schools when we know our children are suffering, um, from lack of support. We know our children live in environments, um, that are not equipped with, that, to meet their needs. So, uh, one of the teachers from MTI pointed out that they needed the 2.44 raise because he had bills, he had mortgage, he had to feed his family. Um, another one pointed out that she just had a baby and that the cost of living is increasing. We do realize that 75% of our black children don't have a home, don't have food, don't have clothes, don't have a mom or consistent love or support, definitely don't have the freedom to run around a space like my three-year-old did today. So when they enter classrooms, they're coming bearing all of that, bearing all of that, and coming into systems and institutions and schools that are, are not designed or equipped to meet their needs because the investment isn't there. So we're looking at $350,000, based on your numbers that you use to support children, that's 31 children. Black excellence don't look like that. Black excellence mean that every single child in Madison School District is given the opportunity to succeed with the understanding that is, it is their environment they did not create, their reality they did not create, their circumstances they did not create, they didn't create the hands that they were dealt, they did not create mass incarceration, they did not create the increase in, of jails and us paying over $200 million to invest in jails. If we're going to support families, then we have to support the whole family holistically, meaning that we have to pour into resources to, to support the parents so that they can build analysis, build awareness, can advocate for themselves, build the language, build the jargon, so they can have or engage in conversations around their IEP so they can ensure that their, their, their children are getting their needs met, that they can say to 15 white folks sitting around an IEP table from administrators to social workers to Department of Human Services to teachers that know that does not go in that particular part of the IEP, it goes into the supplementary plan, right? So that they can get their children's needs met, but you actually have to pay parents to do that work because they're surviving poverty. They don't have a place to live. So we're talking about black excellence, we're talking about every single black child, no matter what they're coming into that, those buildings, bearing or carrying. So when we decide to invest $363,000 into police and we decide to only invest $100,000 into black children, then we really ain't talking about much. So I, I encourage the board to really go to a place in your heart tonight, and I know you guys came up with these figures, I mean, you didn't really, I want you guys to know that what's included in the black excellence plans, this isn't all from the Coalition language. A lot of it was already predetermined as it relates to the strategies and the goals, right? So that wasn't our language, and the amounts determined wasn't something that we requested as a Coalition or as a community, it was already given, right? So in order for us to really commit or to show that we're really invested, we're gonna have to put our money where our mouth is, and we gotta get parents in these schools, and we gotta equip the parents to advocate for their kids. And, and by empowering parents to advocate for their kids, we're, we're, we're educating them, we're providing them with leadership, uh, skills, and they're, and they begin to model that for their children. They become the, the role models for their children. They become the liaison, they become the bridge between staff and police. So hopefully and eventually you can remove police out of the, the equation. Are you guys thinking about a process to do that? I mean, because you guys have this great idea, but what is the alternative, right? What are we putting into place? And it has to be from the community, by the community, and y'all have to put your money where your mouth is. And I just want to thank Jennifer Cheetum for even the opportunity and the idea. So big ups to you, and we are sad to see you leave, and I know I give, I've given you a hard time if you stayed, I continue to give you a hard time, but we're going to absolutely miss you, um, and for real. And I, I hope that the board carries on the legacy of the hard work and having these hard conversations and really not being too scared and uncomfortable when our youth come in here and other people come in here and they articulate their frustration and their, their, like this uncontrollable, I can't even articulate with words what it means to exist in white supremacy society and systems that you guys are representing and that someone, um, described that you inherited, right? So what you gonna do about it is the real question. I'm, I'm glad to see we got a black woman at the end, we got Latina in the middle, we got another one over there, we got a board full of women, but don't make us feel like we did when Trump won, right? When it was 55% white women and Latinas on that list. Thank you. Sorry.
All right. Um, yeah, well, thank, thank you all for coming tonight. Um, again, I'm Michael, um, parent of two black children in Madison School District. Um, I'm also a stay-at-home parent, um, which has afforded me the luxury of, of, of being very, very involved in the school, um, and with, working with Nichelle and her predecessors in other, um, incarnations of, of, of what we've been trying to do, um, getting, uh, you know, parents and families of black children, um, involved in, um, setting course for black excellence, I guess, to put it simply. Um, and I guess I'm, I'm very, very encouraged about what I'm seeing right now. Uh, we brought together, first and foremost, student voices, um, black children speaking out about what's important to them in the schools. Um, we've brought, um, more families together. Um, I, I believe in this process, we've had, um, close to 100 people over the course of, of at least the last few years, but, uh, more specifically recently, 30 to 40. And, um, community leaders, uh, are coming to, to the table to, to help, um, define, um, what needs to happen to make a difference here. And, um, so I find that very, very encouraging. And, and, and also that it, this is, this is just the tip. I mean, the work starts now. After tonight, um, you have our recommendations, um, you have, uh, some suggestions at least for budget items, and I think Brandy is, has been very eloquent in, in speaking about the need for more. And so I, I, I see some things coming together, um, that create some great opportunities. And, um, the one last thing I wanted to express is, I, I'm also obviously a, a white, um, parent of black children, and I, and we heard from other folks tonight who, um, who represent other types of, of families of, of black children. And, um, I think this coalition represents an opportunity for more people to get involved, um, and, and come out and elevate, um, our black children's voices. So thank you for your time.
All right. So as you, as you can tell just from listening to like the incredible experience and voices, um, of the, the panel here tonight, you know, even coming up with the recommendations was not like a linear process. It has been a lot of folks engaged in lots of ways. There have been community, um, meetings, there's been community outrage, um, this school year, and it's also been pulling people together and trying to synthesize, um, and summarize some synergy, um, where, where we're seeing multiple things being mentioned over and over and over again, and I feel like these recommendations represent, um, what I feel like is kind of like the collective energy out in the community, particularly from black folks. And, um, as Michael just said, this is just the beginning, like kind of getting to this benchmark of saying, hey, we've pulled people together, we've listened, we've thought about what we need to do and how we want the district to be accountable, um, we're gonna put this document together, but then the work continues. And, um, I think we, we do hold an expectation that there, the group and/or groups of folks that have come together are, are taken seriously, that their time is appreciated, um, and ultimately for tonight, that the, the budget item that you have in front of you, that you find, um, yourself voting for affirmatively. With that, I will, um, close with a, a quote from one of our students, and then we'll take any comments if, if you want to. Uh, "Black excellence is already a reality. It's just a matter of encouraging other students to believe that it is within them. Let them find the subjects and the places where their black excellence can shine." For a lot of black students, they are, they are simply, uh, they are simply not given the opportunity to reach out or improve, allow them to do more. And that came from an 11th grade student at West High School, and we have more and more examples like that of our young people knowing very clearly what it is to them and what they need, um, to really shine, as they say. So with that, I'll, I'll leave it open for any questions or comments.
I want to thank you all so much for your presentation. Uh, I deeply appreciate the work you're doing, and I take very seriously the call to do more. Um, I want to address elements of the presentation that seemed somewhat passive. Um, so in terms, one of the things I really like about black excellence and funding blacks, uh, black excellence is that it is very specific to the leadership of black people. And so when you talk about professional development, I think what we saw, um, when we started talking about restorative justice, was that restorative justice became kind of a term that we could put on a lot of things, including rooms that were not actually adhering, um, to restorative justice in terms of in-school suspension. And so in order to not allow for something like that to happen to black excellence, um, I'm wondering how, when you look at kind of really broad ideas like professional development, right? We spend a lot more than $250,000 on professional development. It'd be very easy for the board to walk away and say, well, you know, a lot of the professional development we do has a racial justice or equity lens. Let's call that black excellence. Let's buff up this, this budget, um, by, by saying that black excellence is touching, um, everything that we're doing. And I think that is the long-term ultimate goal, is to say that black excellence is embedded in the way we're talking about special education generally, in the way we're talking about, uh, professional development generally. But how do we want to make sure, um, that we're not having this kind of passive relationship with the things that we're calling black excellence? Um, and also, how do we want to address, uh, the idea that we're, we're gonna do this kind of little by little? Um, and, and so, you know, if we have invested into, in the police for the last 18 years, um, that turns out to be millions of dollars, right? Um, that has disproportionately impacted students of color. How are we looking at the funding that has been used, um, to create programming that has disadvantaged students of color, um, and looking at those figures to inform the figures we're looking at moving forward? And I know that this is kind of an initial launchpad, but I, I wanted to speak to those things first and foremost. I also just want to say again, thank you all so much for the work you're doing.
Can I speak to that? Um, as far as like how we plan to do this, it's like eating an elephant, right? You eat it one bite at a time. And the way we pick the bite that we take is with intentionality. We know that the biggest gap that's sitting here right now is that our black children are not being heard. So phase one is, how do we hear the youth voices? Phase two, how do we get them the staff they need that understand how to hear their voices and how to respond? Then step three is, what is the overall complex that is continuing to foster this system of oppression and racism, and how do we combat this? We're not gonna do this in one year. We might not even do this in two years, but we know that we have a plan to start with the first bite, and that starts with intentionality.
Nikki?
Go ahead, Nikki. Sorry, uh, oh. I just wanted to respond real quick to Ali a little bit. Um, I, I, let's just have an honest conversation. I think it's important to be honest and transparent. I think what ends up happening with recommendations is people try not to say the wrong thing. So it, and, I mean, because I hear what you're saying. You're saying like, this doesn't even seem aggressive enough, you know what I mean? And I said the same thing. And I think the, the, the challenge for us is how do we say what we need to say without scaring the white folks away? I mean, that's really, and that's really how it is, you know what I mean? Like, how do we articulate things in a way that's safe, which is also part of the problem? I mean, that is what structural racism looks like. But I, I feel like it is one bite at the, at a time, like she, uh, stated, but I also think we're scared to ask for more, we're scared to take a larger bite, we're terrified, right? We're just happy that we even get to sit at this table and say, oh my God, there's a campaign for black excellence, so we're gonna do something, but we don't want to scare the folks away. And specifically, we don't want to scare MTI away, we don't want to scare the white constituents and the parents away, because if we ask you to invest millions and they're gonna be like, well, what about us? So that is the struggle and that is the challenge. So I just want to be transparent with y'all, and I hope, again, that you guys are really to double and triple the money, because as I stated, we're talking about 31 children at this point.
Nikki?
One, I thank you for the work. Two, I also believe in being transparent and honest. Um, we need to provide for all disabled students, both black and white advocates for individual disabilities. It's the number one thing I hear from every parent, every, almost every day in my work, and it's, and thank you for addressing it. Here's the one, may I, if I may, because I'm going to be, as I said, open and honest, is, um, with the advocates, I think we need to work together as a group with MTI, with the teachers, with everyone, and I think that would work, because as you said, you don't want to offend any group, and I- want to offend any group, and I think creating a joint approach might, with you leading it, might end up working in a way that you can better the outcome, at the same point, still make everyone feel included.
We don't need more money to do that, Nikki.
I, we'll get there.
We got you.
So I've been trying to figure out how to phrase this, and I am not going to say it right. I, thank you for the sound. What I see in the recommendations is a feedback around a lot of things that we know and we are trying and not moving as fast as we want on. And I think the Black Excellence Coalition has a role to play in helping push us and challenge us and say, hey, MMSD School District, you got to do this. And the reason that there's a separate pool of money with a separate decision-making process, and most importantly, a separate set of people making the decisions, is to do the stuff that we wouldn't do, right? It is to do the stuff that's scary, it's to do the stuff that's bolder. It might not be as much money as the $400 million budget that MMSD has, and that every penny of which should be thinking in some way, shape, or form about our kids. But for me, like, what I hope to see is both the push on professional development and hiring and all of the things that are core responsibilities of administration, and what's the next, what's the more challenging thing that maybe all of MMSD isn't ready for, but you can challenge and you can be the decision-makers and say, we're going to do this anyways because we think it's the right thing to do, even if it's a little bit outside of the scope of where we're ready to be at. So I just, for me, that's maybe my hope for what we can achieve through having a Black Excellence Coalition that is autonomous, right? I mean, is a separate group of decision-makers.
Ananda?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Amazing presentation. I'm a little bit, I'm trying to braid in some pieces around, it still feels a little siloed, I mean, still feels very siloed to me, right? Like, we talk about black excellence, and then we talk about everything else. And I think when Ali started the conversation, I think that the, I felt like the essence of that, like, how is it that everything we do, from curriculum and instruction, from discipline, to hiring, every piece has black excellence embedded? And I was thinking about a couple of mainstream ways to do this work, and one is the social justice one, right? Like, we do this because it's the right thing to do. Another one is the business model, right? We're doing this because it's financially responsible to do this, which is a little bit what you were saying, right? The investment we make before, or the investment we make at the end, right? We invest in early childhood, or we invest in incarceration. And so I'm wondering, and we can make those parallels around a lot of things, right? Our negligence around early childhood and K-12 and K-5, and then how we compensate and spend double that amount of money per student in high school in order for students to graduate. We can make parallels to disproportionality in special education, like Nikki had mentioned, right? The amount of money that we spend in a service that is not appropriate service for black children, black and brown children. So I'm wondering if you all had had some conversations or any conversations, or where are the directions around this business model? And I mean business not as a, you know, as a financial implication, as a, you know, to really, yeah, to really like inform the community that, you know, the way in which we are carrying our current budget, our current direction is not, it's not sustainable. And we keep looking at the fixes, and there's something else, right?
So I would just say, just as a reminder, that the coalition building, the engagement sessions really didn't start until the end of February. So from February through the beginning of June, it was about eight meetings. The recommendations are not going to comprehensively cover everything, including the innovative part of the work as well as the foundational information. Like, we had to kind of bring, when you were inviting parents to the table, and they don't have the jargon, they don't know what the district is currently doing, you're bringing in district staff to say, here's what the Human Resources Department is doing to currently recruit, right? You're kind of doing some of the information building, and so some of the deeper conversations around budget, really pushing more on some of the innovation, some of the newer things that we could be doing, that work is coming in the next phase. So that's just kind of as a reminder of kind of like the pace of the work up to this point has been really trying to invite people in and making the invitation in, at least having the information be digestible enough that we can at least say, what would accountability look like if we were going to do something different? So to Ali's point, even around professional development, once the parents that were in the room that night kind of understood the overview of how PD works in MMSD, Michael was like, okay, so you guys are going to do professional development and racial equity. Okay, what's going to be different for my kid? And so how do you assess that? Because you guys telling us that you're just doing PD doesn't mean anything for me as a parent. I need to know, what is my kid coming home with a different experience? And that raised at least a question and a conversation for us to say, oh, so you mean like, if we actually ask students what they're experiencing, that might be a different way of us looking at the impact of professional development? Do you know what I mean? But that was like one conversation. So there's more to do and more to say, and I hope that doesn't sound like excuse-making, it's just that we haven't had tons of time yet to get into some of those topics.
And we have to understand that this is not new, and that we have people that we can benchmark against across the nation. We just haven't done the benchmarking yet because we are still that new. Our plan is to get out there, find out who's doing it well, and try to replicate it. There's no need to reinvent the wheel because there are people doing this successfully, and we need the time to research and investigate that so we can bring that to MMSD.
I would also offer, you know, in terms of, you know, being bold, you know, personally, I'd like to see a black liaison in every single school. I've seen what the BRSs have done for our Spanish-speaking community. It's amazing how they can bring the community together just because they're connected. They're connected. We should, you know, we should do that in all of our schools for our black children. But, you know, when that's raised in our conversations in the coalition meeting, it's like, whoa, the board's going to freak out on something like that. And so, you know, I'm just saying, you know, and, you know, and another, you know, yeah, anyway. Just as an example of bold ideas that do come up and are like, wait a minute, like, let's not try to create a barrier to having dialogue around what is feasible? How do we move forward and get towards making an investment like that? Okay?
Ananda, did you just have?
Just, please be bold.
Yeah.
Thank you for your work.
Just one second.
We're going to come, and here's the thing, that I don't want people feeling like some of these steps are passive. There is active work that is happening within our district. And I can tell you right now, and I can share with the community, right? Your leaders are engaged in this work. When we come together, we are called to action around this work and what does that look like in our schools? The one thing I've appreciated about this Black Excellence Coalition is I've literally taken those questions, how do we know what you're doing in your school? How do we know it's working or not working for your kids? And we've put, and we've taken steps to make sure we are actually hearing the voice of our students. And I can say that even though there has been some explicit work around this for our students, we still need to double down, and we need to work harder, and we will continue to do so. And around professional development, some of our recommendations are the expectation that all staff are trained in cultural humility, right? And issues of race and culture, right? They need to know who the students are that are in front of them. So there's some explicit recommendations that are in the recommendations here. I don't want people thinking that, you know, that it's, there's just passive work. There's some active things that are happening in our schools.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I think I do look at, the recommendations are just great, and I do see this as a very holistic charge for us. And so I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I do feel the sense of urgency to move on many of these areas, and I do see some action steps that we can take, particularly around addressing discipline and disproportionality. That is so critical, particularly when we are trying to pilot taking an SRO out of our schools. It's going to be important to have the Black Excellence Coalition and other community members and organizations to form that, and we need to be committed to invest in that. And then also the Behavior Education Plan, very critical. We have a, we had an ad hoc committee of the board that we are going to close out in a future meeting, but we are charged with continuing to get briefed on the implementation of the Behavior Education Plan. So I think it's going to be critical work for the coalition to work with our Behavior Education Plan staff so that we can hear that in our updates on the BEP. So thank you for your work, really appreciate it. I'm looking forward to hearing about this. I think that we just need to keep this on our agenda and keep it moving, and move with a sense of urgency on these.
Gloria, is it all right if I say a couple of things to close us out? Again, want to thank this coalition, the people who are here, who spoke tonight, but all the people who've been involved along the way and will be involved, because the work will be ongoing. I want to reinforce, just for a second, what Dan just said about, I worry that it might look like the only people who are committed to black excellence or are responsible and being held accountable for black excellence are the coalition. That is not true. Every single one of our leaders, every day, all day long. I think this coalition presents an approach to power sharing, like we haven't at least tried during my tenure, right? We're trying to lean into a kind of power sharing that may be uncomfortable for those of us who've had the formal, right, positional power. And I want to encourage the board to grasp onto that amazing opportunity of authentic power sharing with this coalition. I think their recommendations, some of them align with work that we're already doing, right? Their support will help enhance work that's already underway. I think what I heard in their comments tonight was that there are things that already are working, and that they'd like to see us aggressively scaling some of those things that are already happening. What I worry about is that it's going to sound like people advocating for work that they already do, right? Because there are coalition members who are already doing the work, right? Natural Circles of Support is a great example. Every single, you know, Kamra talked about examples of work that he's been personally involved in. I don't hear this group advocating for themselves. I hear them saying that, hey, we have something that's actually making a positive impact on the well-being of black students. Let's grab onto it and scale it faster. And, yeah. And then the last thing is that I think this coalition is on to some new ways of working that will be essential to the wellness of black children. So I'm just really excited about it. I will be transitioning, of course, as you know, but bringing a new interim superintendent into this work, so they fully, she fully understands how important it is, and will continue to lead it. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, before we end, I want to say something. I just got interrupted, so I'm sorry about that, Jen. But I did want to say before we close out that people that were attending a lot of these meetings are more radical than the people sitting up here. So I just want to say that because I feel like this presentation gives the wrong idea about who was in attendance to a lot of these meetings, and so does the language. I think when what happens is language gets filtered down to match what people think you need to hear, and I just don't feel like, I feel like I heard two of you guys saying, like, y'all need to be bolder. That's what my translation was. I heard you say, we need to be bolder, and I also heard you say that there's this expectation for this coalition to lead the charge. And I just want to say that in order for a coalition to lead a charge, it needs a coordinator, which takes a salary, right? We can't expect Nichelle to do that work. I feel like she's the director, so someone needs to be like, I feel like, this is just my opinion, I didn't obviously have this conversation with her, but this is just my own analysis around it. Like, who's going to ensure that the coalition itself has an analysis, right? We're all, it's like this assumption that all black people work from the same angle, and we don't, right? Because we're a culture, black people are on this huge spectrum of understanding background, experiences, class, and what have you. So I think that needs to be considered. Like, in order for us to move effectively as a group with this huge expectation tied on to it, we ourselves need training. And if we're gonna, if you're gonna have training to your teachers and staff and the personal development, then it needs to be led by radical people. Because only radical people will challenge you to be revolutionary as it relates to infusing black excellence and understanding what trauma response looks like. So I just, because we can't do the same personal development assessment, and you can't, it just, it's insanity, right? So I just wanted to say that, anyway.
Thank you. And I just want to-
And I just want to- I just want to say that Brandy is speaking for herself.
Right, okay.
Okay? Right? So I don't agree, and I don't want to discount the rest of us who have put our hard work into this coalition. So to say that we are not radical is not the right, is not the appropriate thing to say. So I do want to say that.
You're not the most radical people.
Right, but that's an assumption. I just want to say that. Okay?
All right. And so in the power of the people, let me just say, it has been a privilege working with such a diverse group of folks. We don't always agree. I actually would not agree with your statement either, but it doesn't matter, because at the end of the day, we're not a monolithic group. We need as many perspectives at the table helping to give voice. We need some radical, we need some in-the-middle, we need some analysis. I mean, like, and I've tried to invite and work with as many folks who are willing to come to the table. I appreciate how much time and energy everybody has volunteered. The work continues. Yes, we do need a coordinator. We'll follow up on that. Let's-
That was for the board.
I understand. No, no, I wasn't saying it like that. I'm saying, yes, you need to be able to staff and resource, and we have to wrap it up. Ba-dum-bum. All right? Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Report on items that proceeded through the Instruction Work Group held on June 3, 2019. I'll turn it over to Mary.
Yes, we have two, we had two items that will be coming up for a vote, so I'm not going to cover those. Again, that's the Elementary and Middle Schools of Hope Partnership Renewal, and the Juventud Escala partnership renewal as well. Our next meeting is August 5. The topic is the ELL evaluation. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mary. Next, report on items that proceeded through the Operations Work Group held on June 10, 2019. Kate?
So most of our last Operations Work Group meeting was on the budget. We're going to have a discussion on that next, so I won't speak to that. At this point in time, our next meeting is scheduled for July 15. The main focus of that will be around our Building Excellence Plan, and we'll have some time on that as well at our Board Retreat, which is this Friday, to really dig into the proposed capital referendum for Building Excellence, and we may have some policy work as well.
Great. Now, we're on to the budget.
The amendment?
Are we?
I think we're doing the partnerships first, Gloria.
Oh, I'm on the wrong page.
Mm-hmm. So Schools of Hope, et cetera.
Okay, yes. Action items that proceeded through the Instruction Work Group. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve entering into a three-year memorandum of agreement for the renewal of Elementary Schools of Hope program. These are the in-kind services as set forth in the documents prepared for the June 24, 2019 Regular BoE meeting. Can I get a-
Second. So moved. I thought, I thought-
So you move? Can I get a second?
I thought she so moved it. I apologize.
Any discussion on this?
Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Seven, zero.
Okay, now I'm going to move. I move that the Board of Education approve an expenditure in the amount of $191,000 using funding from the Department of Strategic Partnerships and Innovation Budget in support of a contract for services with the Urban League of Greater Madison to deliver the Middle Schools of Hope program during the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? Anika, can I have your advisory vote?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I move that the Board of Education approve an expenditure in the amount of $75,000 using funding from the 2019-2020 Department of Strategic Partnerships Budget in support of a contract for services with Centro espano of Dane County to deliver the Juventud and Escala programs during the 2019-2020 school year.
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now, we are on to the budget.
Are we starting with the amendments?
If it's all right first, Kelly's just going to say a few words to recap the budget, given that it's one of the biggest decisions we make each year. We just want to slow it down for a second, say a few words, and then we'll get on to the motions. All right, thanks Kelly and Lisa for joining us. And whenever you're settled, Kelly, feel free to do a quick overview.
All right, good evening. So we are here tonight to present the 2019-20 preliminary budget for your approval. This budget was built in partnership between the Board and the Administration. We've been working on this together since January. This document was updated between April and today, based on the community feedback and Board direction. That includes adding the $100,000 to the Black Excellence Community Coalition that we've talked about tonight to bring it up to the $350,000. After tonight, we'll be reconciling all of our budget assumptions throughout the summer and in the fall. And at the end of October, we'll bring you a final budget for your approval. The budget book in front of you is a strong budget, in line with the district's values and the MMSD strategic framework. It's built on a set of high-leverage strategies, including a focused set of strategic equity projects, a staffing plan aligned to class-size policy, and over $1.5 million invested in special education and student services, additional personnel in schools. All the while, maintaining stability in the Employee Benefits Plan, repurposing over $1 million in existing resources, and maximizing the use of our last year of the 2016 referendum authority. Our proposed operating budget is $418 million. Of this, 71% is supported through our local taxpayers. And 83% of our operating expenses are in support of high-quality staff through compensation and benefits. Tonight, you'll be asked to vote on two separate motions. The budget book supports the fiscally conservative approach of $100 per pupil and revenue limit authority. Without having a final state budget in our hands, this is where we're at for the current budget at this time. That budget we would implement starting January 1. It produces a $418 million operating budget, a $463 million all-funds budget, and produces a 6.21% in tax levy increase. However, first, we'll have you vote on a set of motions tied to a more optimistic, but yet realistic contingency budget. This motion is designed such that when we receive our state budget, and if it provides the additional $100 per pupil for a total of $200 per pupil that we hope to receive, we can then implement this contingency budget immediately. And at that time, the budget would be $421 million in operating funds, $465 million in all funds, and a 6.87% in tax levy. Our next steps after tonight would then be to confirm our state budget as soon as we get that from the state, finalize our negotiations on base wage with the union. We'll confirm all of our estimates, particularly around general and equalization aid, and our open enrollment estimates, as these are all assumptions right now around our enrollment, open enrollment, our 2X charter impact, and our voucher impact. By the end of October, you'll certify our final tax levy and adopt our final budget motion. So those are my kind of short, tight comments for you tonight. I know it's late. If there's no questions, I'll hand it right over to Gloria to read the first motion.
Sure, okay. I'm going to go slow on these motions. And we'll rely on my colleagues to help me out if I err. So, given the fact that we do not yet have a state budget or a determined revenue source, we are about to take two different paths on our budget tonight. While we might like to embed our $200 per pupil and revenue limit authority from the state into the budget at this time, we do not feel comfortable committing revenue we do not know we have. Therefore, the first set of motions tonight are contingent on the state budget and would not take into effect until and unless we receive $200 per pupil in total revenue authority. The second set of motions will be on the current draft preliminary budget as presented by the Administration. The second set of motions will be the district's operating budget until our state budget is known. Any amendments Board members have to offer to the state, to the budget priorities, should be offered up while voting on the second set of motions for the district's current operating budget. I will read the first motion, respond to any questions, and then we will vote. The first motion is our contingency motion for the state budget. Motion, it's titled Number 1A, if, it's the if-then motion budget. It is recommended that if the total per pupil revenue in the biennial Wisconsin State Budget increases to 200 or more, and/or if the estimated special education categorical aid reimbursement increases more than what is currently budgeted, then the district will allocate the resulting unbudgeted revenue to staff, base wage, and total compensation. The Board would therefore approve and adopt the 2019-2020 preliminary budget as proposed in the total amount of $521,558,118, inclusive of all funds with said proposed budget having been identified in the document entitled Version 2 of the DPI Preliminary Budget Adoption Format dated June 24, 2019. I move. Second. Discussion?
I'll go first.
So I just want to take this moment to disclose that I will not vote on this motion and recuse myself due to a conflict of interest based on the fact that my partner is currently a teacher with the district.
I tend to like the more liberal approach, but I have one quick question on the conservative. Oh, sorry. Two, a quick question on the conservative one, and what I say, I mean no offense. Two years ago, when we did the healthcare vote, we were told that any reserves from switching healthcare plans would go to the teachers. Yet that got changed in the next budget and had to be corrected so that it actually went there. One year ago, when we did money for special education for $1 million, it was a seven, zero vote, and the money was put into savings. How do we guarantee the money will be given to our teachers?
Nikki, negotiations with the, with our unions are still open, and I can assure you that they will hold us accountable at the bargaining table. Regarding the healthcare, we can, you know, go back through that, but what had happened was-
Actually, I would like to. Because very simply, I'm not worried about the union's commitment, I'm worried about ours.
Yeah. What had happened back then was the state was threatening to force us to go up to 12% in employee percentage contributions. And so the conversation was that if we went up to 12% in employee contributions, that we would put all that money into compensation. What happened was that got pulled, the 12% got pulled. The Board did not increase employee compensation to 12%, therefore the funding was not available to put back in compensation.
And on the second one, on the $1 million in special ed, I just want to make sure. Because it's really important, and it's very important in my decision-making ability.
Okay, any other?
Yeah, the million dollars, what, that happened a year ago, that was put into savings, correct?
It was put into a reserve to be used if needed. We explained to the Board at that time that we already had a reserve. This created an additional reserve in special ed. And based on the expertise of the special ed team, we didn't need to dip into the additional reserve that the Board voted on at that meeting.
And the Board was made aware of this, correct, before that happened?
I feel like I'm being quizzed here. Nikki, if there's a, we understand your point. We are committed to making sure that the funding goes to compensation.
Just wanted to make sure on that.
Let's go ahead and move on. Chris?
First, I want to thank everybody on the Board, and Kelly, and Matt, and everybody on the team who got this motion to the table. This motion is not perfect. I hate the fact that we're making our staff wait for the state of Wisconsin budget before we commit to funding them. I would much rather make us, I would much rather see us put consultants and travel and food for conferences and things like that on the back burner and pay our staff upfront. But that's not happening, and this is where we're at. And we can't get to 2.44% without committing the money we get from the state to our staff in its entirety. And this is money above and beyond what we've budgeted. This is about $2.7 million. It will add 1% cost-of-living adjustment if it all goes to our staff on top of the .5 that's already built into the budget, so it does not get us to 2.44%. It's a, it's a good start. For that reason, I fully support this motion. I want the minutes to reflect that the legislative intent of this motion is for us to use any amount of additional funding that we get from the state for our teachers. If, if the actual per pupil revenue ends up being 199, it goes to our teachers. It doesn't have to hit that $200 mark. If it's 105, the extra $5 goes to our teachers. That's the legislative intent here. The other legislative intent I want the minutes to reflect is that this is intended for a base wage increase. We had to put in staff compensation for a lot of technical reasons, like paying FICA and workers' comp. But the goal here is to provide a base wage increase for our staff. And just to clarify, the language of this is really confusing. If the budget kicks in from the state above what we've already budgeted, this automatically kicks in, so.
Great. Thanks, Chris, for the clarification. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to clarify, Chris, it's not just teachers.
Thank you, yeah.
This is staff.
Thank you, Mary. All right, we ready for a vote? All right, Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have one recusal.
So six, one more. Six, one more.
Okay, on to the next. Motion 1B, if-then motion, the tax levy. It would be then, it would then be further recommended that the Board approve the preliminary tax levies by fund, with the said levy approvals being, one, for the purpose of enabling short-term borrowing by the district during the 2019-2020 fiscal year, and, two, subject to modifications by the Board prior to November 1, 2019, in conjunction with certifying the final levy amounts based upon the then-current status of the 2019-2020 school district budget, considering such alterations and amendments as may be made prior to levy certification. And I'll just go through this chart here. Fund 10, General Fund, $298,654,293. Fund 38, Non-Referendum, $5,257,768. Fund 39, Referendum Approved Debt Service, $8,300,900. Fund 41, Capital Expansion Fund, $5 million. Fund 80, Community Services Fund, $11,967,337, with a total tax levy of $329,182,98. So moved, so. Any discussion? All right, Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Yes.
Yes.
Now that our contingency budget has passed, we will vote on the current preliminary budget that provides the district with operating authority for the month of July. If Board members have amendments to this budget, I'm asking you to hold them for the second motion I'm about to read. The first motion on our preliminary budget is simply on compensation. It is approving the district's total compensation plan. It is recommended that the Board approve and adopt the 2019-2020 preliminary budget on total staff compensation as proposed in the total amount of $366,379,501, inclusive of all funds with said proposed budget having been identified within the document entitled DPI Preliminary Budget Adoption Format dated June 24, 2019.
I move. Second.
Discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm just going to disclose the same conflict of interest.
Okay, great, thank you. Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. And with one recusal.
Abstained.
Abstained. Okay, motion 2B?
No, I said you did.
It is recommended that the Board approve and adopt the 2019-2020 preliminary budget as proposed in the total amount of $518,818,985, or $463,010,732 net of inter-fund transfers, inclusive of all funds. With that, with said proposed budget having been identified in the document entitled DPI Preliminary Budget Adoption Format dated June 24, 2019.
And this would be when our-
This is when, if any other amendments are offered, you do that individually. So moved? Let's get it on for.
Can we get a second first?
So moved?
Second.
Okay.
I would like to enter a motion-
Discussion? Okay, go ahead, Nikki.
I would like to enter a motion regarding Simpson Street Free Press. Estimated cost of, estimated cost of $30,000. And my language was MMSD will budget $30,000 to support the Academic Achievement Youth Center, Southtown Mall, MMSD, and Simpson Street Free Press will share facility cost. Simpson Street Free Press will opu, will operate, sorry, I can't talk, a menu of youth programs and offer academic support for students in grades 2 through 12. The faculty produces consistent results, and has so for the past 26 years, and warrants MMSD support. The faculty benefits from robust system. I've heard from every parent under the sun, I swear, since I put this amendment out. And I like the fact that Simpson Street is open 52 weeks a year, so there is no lag in students' academics. There is also no lag. Additionally, their partnerships is UW Physics Department, Book Clubs and Writing Programs, and the UW School of Education brings trained math tutors to Southtown. The additional interest in this is, this is one program that actually has shown to affect the achievement gap. Math scores have gone up in reading and math, and they have dramatically. And in that, I believe that is essentially important. I know there had been some discussion on whether or not a partnership had existed, and I, I had posted something that which stated that 2014, we had some type of agreement. I don't know if that's a partnership, I don't know, and it may not be. But what I am asking for is to do the $30,000 in this amendment, and then, and then continue to work with Simpson Street to create a partnership.
Just, Nikki, can you get to the motion so that we can-
Yes, yes, sorry, I'm getting. The, the motion which I started with is that we budget $30,000 to support the Academic Achievement Youth at Southtown Mall. And we will share facility costs at $30,000, facility costs with MMSD and Simpson Street Free Press. And I therefore move that this amendment for the $30,000- be entered into the budget for 2019.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion?
Sorry, I didn't do the second.
Discussion on this? Chris?
I just want to put out there that I fully support this amendment. I've visited Simpson Street Free Press. I've looked at some of their numbers. This is one of the few out-of-school-time programs we have that is academically focused and I greatly appreciate that. We need more programs like this in the community. I know that one of the arguments against approving this money has been that it's not the approved process. We're supposed to go through a partnership process to bring partners on. We've heard loud and clear that Simpson Street Free Press is black excellence. We've also heard loud and clear that for... In the interest of blacks' excellence, we have to be bold. We sometimes have to change the rules a little bit. I think this is a circumstance where we should change the rules and go ahead and approve the money through this channel.
Kate?
I'm sorry, I'm going to make this complicated right off the bat. I would really like to support this as well. I also want to support the process and I think we can do both. So I would like to put forward an amendment. We'll see if there's a second to fund $30,000 pending successful completion of the partnership process. So if there's a second, we can amend this and then we would be able to fund Simpson Street pending successful completion of the partnership.
Just a point of order and clarification. I think we need to vote on... We need to close one amendment?
No.
Or is this a friendly amendment? Or is it a second amendment in competition to the first amendment?
So Nikki's amendment would be a primary amendment. Kate's amendment would be a secondary amendment. And so now we would vote back up. And so we would vote on Kate's first. And then if that was approved, that would amend the primary amendment that Nikki made. And then we would vote again on that primary amendment. And then that would conclude.
So first, we decide if we want to make it pending? Second, we decide if we would want to approve the $30,000 pending completion?
Okay, I second Kate's amendment. Discussion? Can you... Kate, can you?
Actually, yes, discussion.
Go ahead.
Very simply. I have not only a plan that was developed in 2014... A statement developed in 2014 on what Simpson Street does, but I've had multiple emails, which I've also seen, that say that we... That they did a partnership agreement and some that said they don't. I don't think the process was done clearly. I think the tying the money to a process where we could change the rules in the middle of the game is something I really worry about. I can move the partnership part to October, but the $30,000 I don't think should be contingent on it because I think the program needs the expansion. I really do think that it's a game changer. And I want... I want to be bold. I want to do something that changes the achievement gap. I want to actually have an effect. And I think this can actually do it.
I think Ananda and then Mary.
Can I get clarification on a motion?
You want to clarify?
It would fund exactly per this amendment pending completion of a partnership process. I mean, it would just mean that...
The same partnership process?
The standard partnership process.
Mary?
Yeah, I think if we want to see change, then we need to put it in a partnership agreement that helps support the objectives that we want to see. I think the best long-term impacts come when there is a clear understanding of what is going to be... Both sides are going to be... are going to deliver. And I think that's why I support this amendment. Because I want to see change. I want to see it be successful. I want to see it go on long-term. But without a discussion on what that looks like, unfortunately, the chances are much smaller. So I think when two parties get together and they talk about what that looks like, there's a much greater chance of long-term success.
May I answer, please?
Just a second, Nikki.
I would like to respond directly to that.
Okay, go ahead and then we got to move on.
I understand. The thing is, is that Simpson Street, and we do have the emails, has applied three times for a partnership. How do I know it won't happen again for the fourth?
Okay, thank you, Nikki. Go ahead. Ananda?
I'm just wondering if... I'm still a little confused of why we're doing a second amendment. I think I'm wondering if we can just... I don't know. If Nikki would accept a friendly amendment?
No.
To be... Okay. Did I answer my question?
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote. Anika, your advisory vote? Oh, wait a minute.
I just want to clarify that this is a vote on Kate's secondary amendment to add language that would require the successful completion of the MOA partnership process.
Exactly. Anika, your advisory vote?
Abstain.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Nay.
You got that?
And with one abstaining, Ananda abstained.
You got that? Okay. All right, now we're back to the original amendment. Okay, any further discussion on that? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
So that's 7-0, right?
Any opposed?
No, I voted aye.
Okay, any opposed? No, okay. You got it? All right. Okay, any other amendments?
I move that at or before the July Operations Work Group meeting, the board is presented with recommendations for budget cuts or reallocations totaling $4 million that could be used to reduce the tax levy, balance the budget and/or increase staff compensation. These recommendations should emphasize cost savings in administration, purchase services, non-capital and capital objects, and unfilled positions, and may not include cuts to union staff positions. Recommended cuts may not increase class size or reduce direct services to students. These recommendations could include revenue and/or revenue authority neither anticipated in the draft preliminary budget nor already allocated to staff compensation.
I second.
Discussion?
So I just want to...
Has it been seconded yet?
Yes, we're in discussion and Chris has something and then Nikki?
On the...
Just Chris?
Oh, sorry, I thought you said...
I'm sorry. You're next, Nikki.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chris.
So I made a small change to this motion since I last emailed it, which was to move the date up to July from October. This was based on concern on the part of administration that making budget decisions in October is too late and things are already set. So I moved the date up. And also because I think July better fits our timeline for collective bargaining. We're headed into a year with a great deal of uncertainty. We're looking at a major leadership transition in the district. We don't have a state budget yet. We're still in the midst of bargaining with the union. And this motion is just put out there to give us some flexibility to deal with that uncertainty. It gives us choices. We don't have to cut an entire $4 million from the budget, but it gives us some idea of things that could be cut if we need to balance the budget for some reason. If the state budget comes in much worse than we think it's going to, if we don't actually get additional staff money or state money to pay our staff and we want to dig into our budget to do the right thing and pay them. If we wanted to lower the tax levy because everything's coming up roses. This is just about giving the board flexibility. I think it's also a good exercise for us moving into next year, which I think is going to be a difficult budget year, to start to get a sense of where we might be able to start looking at things we can let go of. And on the theme of things to let go of, that's something that a couple of board members have been asking for pretty consistently since January, is things that we could let go and what the budget implications of that would be. Putting this into the budget as opposed to just waiting for the Operations Work Group to address it means that maybe that will actually happen now, so.
Thank you, Chris. Nikki and then Ananda?
Yes. Without our teachers, we don't have a school. Plain and simple. We hear about black excellence. We hear about we want what's best for our most important investment, our children. Problem is, we have teachers who are leaving. We have people who are not getting their needs met. We have schools where they're struggling because they don't have enough SEAs, yet their population has gone down. So it's an allocation issue. The only way we're going to get out of this problem is to pay our teachers the 2.44. Do I like risking for... Of course not. Do I want to mess our budget up and cut it to the bone? No, I really don't. However, our teachers are worth it and they have to be fought for because if we don't, then we don't have a school district left. Therefore, I'm voting in support of this amendment.
Ananda?
Looking to Chris to clarify how this amendment is different than the first amendment that was presented by the board president. And then I'm seeking counsel from Lisa and Kelly.
So the difference is, first, this is amendment and not a motion. Secondly, the first motion said that we would take any additional money we get from the state and we would devote that to staff compensation. This amendment is on the budget we know we have, the base budget that we're passing, and it's saying we will find savings in that budget for flexibility. A major intent of that flexibility is staff compensation. We're about $2 million short right now for getting to a 2.44% cost of living base wage increase.
Just one more clarification. So the... As it stands, it says that for budget cuts or reallocation, totally $4 million, but it's not all $4 million. It's to give flexibility in case there's not up to $4 million.
It's to provide flexibility, yes. We don't have to cut $4 million from the budget.
Kelly, why don't you start? They were just going to get to Ananda's question, right?
Sure. So while I understand the sentiment behind this particular motion, it would be nearly impossible to implement at this period in time to cut $4 million out of the operational budget this late in the budgeting process, particularly with the parameters that are built in to this particular motion. It would be virtually impossible for Lisa and I to implement. The majority of our costs, as you've seen in previous slides, are tied to staffing. And those that are not... And that staffing are tied to contracts. Those that are not, is a small portion of our budget and a lot of that is annual reoccurring costs that operate the district moving forward. So it would be impossible to try to keep this away from students and classrooms at this period of time, which would ultimately create some instability into the system. Our budgeting process is very intentional. We have an intentional timeline. And in order to make large-scale change, the timeline to do that is between November and March. And I'm absolutely in support of starting those conversations as it relates to the 2021 budget as early as the board needs. But at this late period in time, we would not have the amount of time needed to implement cuts at this scale, particularly to implement them well.
And if I could emphasize that even the exercise of coming up with a list of $4 million in cuts, it would produce an enormous distraction. When we have had to make real cuts years ago, those of some of you who were on the board then know, we spent months figuring out how to cut $6 million responsibly, right, keeping cuts as far away as possible from schools. And that was still impossible to do without touching schools at all. So I just... Kelly's right. Implementing it would be impossible. And the exercise of coming up with a list would take an enormous amount of work and we just would not recommend using the staff's time in that way in a critical time period when we're trying to get ready for another school year.
Just a second. Okay, next is Mary.
I have my...
Kate?
Yeah, I've been on the board for...
Good point.
I'm into my eighth year now. And I have never seen an amendment that is, as I think irresponsible, as this. It shows a lack of trust, I think, in our staff that somehow they've been squirreling away $4 million that isn't needed. I think about, is it going to be... And for... And I call it irresponsible because as board members, we are elected to make the difficult decisions. And to pass the buck back to our staff and say, "Find $4 million", is not taking the responsibility that I feel we are elected to do. If we want to cut $4 million, then we should be the ones who are saying, "Yeah, don't give bus passes to kids." We're the ones who should say, "Don't fund black excellence." We're the ones who need to go through and make those really difficult decisions. But to pass an amendment that puts the burden on our staff and somehow thinks that with... If you take away all compensation, which is 83% of our budget, and then you take away services like transportation, food services, and the rest, that's 17% of it, and somehow there's $4 million, but we don't have to make those difficult decisions, is something that as a board member, I certainly don't support.
All right, Kate?
And then I'm after Kate, right?
So I have three comments. I... The first comment is there's sort of two ways to read this amendment. One is that this amendment is just asking for a research exercise, right? There's no commitment to do anything. I actually support the research exercise at a different point in time. I think it's the core work of our Operations Work Group and that we can and should. And I would be eager to engage in a question like this over the course of kind of the fall leading into the next budget. And I think it's healthy to have fresh ideas and fresh challenge around how we spend money. So I think from a research perspective, this is a core part of our operations work and fully support it. The other way to read this is that it's asking us to cut $4 million out of essentially non-staff cut spend right now for this budget. Non-staff spend, if you take out food services, which I just happen to know the budget of, is under $50 million. So this is... You're asking to take 10% of the budget out of non-staff spend at the last hour. And I'm sure there's some money that we don't spend every year on certain things, people that don't get staffed, or curriculum... Like, there's stuff every year. There's not 10%. And I just worry, given all of the other transitions, I don't think this is the right time to do that. So I'm eager to do this at a different point in time, not tonight. Yeah, that's maybe just... That's... I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Kate. Nikki and then Ali.
Here's my comment. One, we stated that our teachers are our most important investment. So far, the ER costs have gone up from $50 to $150 this year. We've... We're worried about bus passes, but we don't know if we're going to have teachers. I find this problematic. But what I really would like to be, have reflected the minutes, is Jen's comment that it would take too much time for staff to be able to make these accommodations for our teachers. I think that's important for the press to know. I think that's important. I'm sorry, but what you are saying is that you're pitting our teachers against the administration in a way on an amendment. And I'm sorry, I find that incredibly inappropriate. I've watched four months where we've tried to work this out and I get that and I understand the frustration. And I get that, that we can't do everything. And as for black excellence, I want to fund it. I want to fund it more than anything. But if it means the backs of our teachers, I can't do it. And so that's why I have to vote in support of it.
Thank you, Nikki. Ali?
Can we share a mic? I'm sorry, I should have moved it over for you.
It's okay. I obviously can't speak to the portion of this amendment that is specific to folks' wage and to that being staff in general. What I can speak to is the fact that I appreciate, Chris, the level of agility that you tried to embed within this specific amendment. I do think that it... It shifts the conversation from what we have been able to analyze as a board in terms of expenses and allocations to kind of what folks within the administration want to prioritize in terms of the chopping block. And I think that that is a very complex framework to navigate. And so although I appreciate kind of the level of agility that was placed in the amendment, and I think some of the potential of the amendment, I fear the consequences of this specific amendment in terms of its lack of ability to identify where the cut comes from. And so that, I feel a little uneasy in terms of that, both in part in saying, "This is a cut we want to make as a board," and also in saying, "We don't actually, we haven't actually identified that." And so although I appreciate the flexibility, I think there's a lot of complexity within the lack of identification in terms of what we're talking about exactly. And I think the vague suggestion of cutting in the area of $4 million also makes me particularly uncomfortable.
Thank you, Ali. Yeah, I think, you know, I appreciate the commitment behind this amendment and our teachers. I strongly believe that everybody at this table is in support of our teachers. But we also have to make strong decisions. And that is, that is looking at our budget holistically and figuring out, making tough choices and figuring this out. And that is the responsibility of this board to balance our budget. And I'm just really concerned about taking this amount of money and not knowing where it's going to come from. And I know, yeah, that's all I'm going to say. Chris, do you have something? One last thing, and then we're gonna move on.
So just some quick responses. We don't have to cut $4 million from the budget. This just gives us some flexibility. $4 million is less than 1% of our budget. And the reason I picked that number is that in a good year, we roll $4 million into our fund balance, and rolling money into our fund balance is really important, as we've been told. It helps keep our credit rating good. It keeps us fiscally solvent as a district. But because we are able to save that much in a good year and roll it over, it means that those savings have to exist somewhere. So that's why I picked that number particularly. Again, we don't have to spend the full $4 million. I also want to point out that over the past six or seven years, we've seen 58% growth in non-union professionals in the district, despite the fact that our enrollment has stayed pretty steady, which also tells me that maybe we just need to do some thinking about priorities, and do we really need all this administration in the district?
Ananda, and then we're gonna go for a vote.
I appreciate a lot of the discussion, and I appreciate the strong language being used, pro and against the amendment. What I feel is that we're either responsible to the teachers, or we're responsible to charge administration to a significant level of work already expressed here. This entire process feels extremely inhumane. There's a lose-lose situation here. So having said that, I feel really conflicted on our ability to be creative as we're problem solvers. There's a lot of really brilliance around, you know, all those tables, including Barb's table. And we continue to be in a stalemate as far as how we lead. So my vote forward is in no disrespect to either the teachers or the administration, because I have a great respect for all of you, and I know we've done a lot, a lot of work on this. And as Nikki mentioned a couple times, I mean, if we don't value our teachers and we don't treat them with humanity, how are they expecting them to treat our children with humanity?
Gloria, can I make one last comment before you vote? And I only want to say this because I feel like maybe Nikki misheard me. I am not, similar to Kate, I think we every year have to dig deep to make whatever cuts we need to make, and we do. We repurpose millions of dollars year after year to make our budget work. And it is simply about timing and how careful and meticulous you have to be when you make decisions to cut the budget so as not to have a negative impact on schools. Thank you.
I just want to second the timing comment. I mean, we started building a budget in January, and we will do that again next year. And I would love for everyone here to hold what we all think is a better solution, because I believe probably lots of us at the table have a different, better solution in mind. For January, when we put the base assumptions into the budget, the base assumption of base wage, of healthcare, right, of class size, those are the big movers in our budget, and they are choices that we hold. And so I just, I really want to push us to remember this moment in January, because I think we can get to a better place, to be honest. And in order to do that in a way that doesn't disrupt our classrooms in a very significant way in two months, that now isn't the time to do it. So just...
All right, let's go for a vote. Anika, your advisory vote?
Nay.
I'm sorry?
Nay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm sorry, okay.
All in favor of this motion?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Nay. Do you want the show of hands, or?
Just the nays, please.
Okay, where are we? I think we're three, two?
Three to three, and that's fail.
Okay. Motion?
I abstained.
So the motion failed?
Yeah, okay, I was wondering about Ali, but motion failed, okay? Do we have any other amendments?
Well, yep.
Yeah.
No. Okay, just a second. I can't hear you guys. You guys, I can't hear. Any other amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we amend the current budget to reduce... Okay, so first I want to say this, again, to the lose-lose situation. We are faced to decide which equity priorities were more important than others, and placing workers against each other, and a sentiment that our staff needed to struggle to advocate for a cost of living increase. I move that we amend the current budget to reduce the advanced learning investments by eliminating the new three FTE positions, and for the funding to be reallocated to a financial reserve for further consideration of spending.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? No discussion on it?
I'd like to say one thing.
Okay, go ahead.
This amendment, this amendment and the other next two that I would propose is an attempt to increase our reserve in order to afford compensation to our staff and leave us some flexibility. But this amendment is no way to convey that advanced learner, uh, learning, special education, and mental health expansion is not a priority to me. Quite the contrary, as a mother of a brilliant, creative, multilingual student who often feels that she does not measure high enough and her brilliance is dimmed, we must do better for our staff, for our students, and our families, and at the same time, honor the hard work of Kelly and Lisa as far as putting this budget together.
Okay, go ahead, Kate?
Yeah, I mean, I think we had a good discussion at our last ops group around advanced learning, and I think there, what I heard from that was some skepticism around one of the roles here. I'm not going to second amend right now because I want to just talk before making it complicated. I really struggle with pulling back the two roles that are dedicated to elementary schools for pilots. We heard a speaker this, earlier, talk about her gifted child who was bored. And that circumstance happens so much, right? We've got a half an FTE in most of our elementary schools. Leopold's 700 kids, right? It's not anywhere close to enough if we want to support all of the paths of development for our kids. And so I, you know, I think the pilots are critical for us, honestly, to be able to understand what that might look like. You heard, you heard the commentary that this teacher was going to have to develop a curriculum by themselves for her child, and that is, that is the norm, right? If you have a child that's learning past grade level, if you have a child who's an artist, a musician, a dancer, a leader, it requires teachers to develop something essentially by themselves right now. And I just don't think that's good enough for a district our size. So I would, if people wanted me to amend this to be just the one role, I don't want to make it crazy complicated. So I'm kind of looking from a nod from you, Ananda. Just...
I... Ali, go first.
So I do think prioritizing advanced learners ties into our work in terms of equity. I think who is recognized as an advanced learner is about how we enhance our capacity to make sure that all students are able to be recognized for their skills and talents. And so I think that this is a really tough cut to make. I also think that the district has been sued for not meeting the needs of advanced learners. And so I think, were we to be sued for not meeting the needs of disabled students, we, you know, the board would not talk about then cutting funding to provide greater capacity to do that work. And currently, we're not meeting all areas of advanced learners, so we're not addressing all five areas. And I think growth in the areas of arts and leadership is a priority of this body. And so that is, that's my say.
I'd have to, I'm sorry if I raised my hand if I may.
I have to agree with Ali on this one, and it goes down not just on disability and not just on advanced learners. I'm a lawyer by trade. We don't like being sued. That tends to be our major objective in law, is to avoid being sued. Very simply, we had an office of civil rights violation for a reason. That means that it's a problem, and it needs to be taken seriously. As someone who was dual-exceptional when the term barely existed, and for those who don't know, it means both disabled and gifted at the same time, I can understand that struggle and that it does make sense. So under the circumstances, as much as I want to pay our teachers, and as much as I want to, I just, I can't do it. I could do one, I can't do two.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, let's go for a vote.
Are you, Kate, are you still proposing the friendly amendment?
So if you, it's up to you.
I'll accept.
Like, I think we can either vote up or down the three, that's what's on the floor right now, or we can amend it to the one.
I'll accept your amendment.
All right, so...
The friendly amendment then replaces it.
Matt, you got the language?
Well, could you just make the amendment to satisfy Robert's rules?
Yes.
And then get a second, and then we'll vote, and then...
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So I would like to move that we reduce the reduction to one FTE, the secondary designated FTE.
And then I accept.
You second, you second, and then we all vote?
I'll second.
Yep.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, take a vote. Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, do you got that?
So it carries or it doesn't? It passed, correct?
Now, we do need to vote on the primary amendment. Right, thank you.
Can I just retract?
No, you want that vote.
No, because yours is to reduce at all. The first vote was just to go from three to one, and yours is to reduce it all. So we do still need to vote on the primary amendment.
All right, so let's take a vote. Anika, your advisory vote?
Um, abstain.
Abstain, okay. All in favor? Okay, all opposed? Nay.
Nay.
So everybody's, nay, raise hands, nay. You got everybody?
Oh, wait a minute, no, wait, 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 wait.
I want to make sure everyone understands what just happened.
I'm confused by that.
Yeah, so what you just did was now there's no reduction. It is, yeah.
Yeah, so there's no reduction.
Yeah, based on the vote that just happened.
Right. Do you guys understand that? Except that one, we accepted the one.
Yeah, that's what I was confused on.
Okay, so the motion you'll be voting on now is the motion to reduce the AL staff by one individual. Yes, that's what I, but I don't know if everybody understood that, Mary. That's what I'm just saying.
Does that, is that what we're discussing?
We're reducing it to one.
The secondary amendment reduced it from three to one, and then the primary amendment is now to reduce at all, or the AL positions by one. That's what the last vote was for, and that was defeated. So that would mean no reduction whatsoever in AL positions.
Should we try it again?
Okay, should we try it again?
I think that might be a good idea.
Yes, please.
Do we need one more explanation on this?
No.
Can you do it one more time? Just what are we voting on right now?
It is confusing.
So here's what would be the current motion we're voting on. I move that we amend the current budget to reduce the advanced learning investment by eliminating two FTE positions, and for funding to be reallocated to a financial reserve for further consideration of spending.
Second.
Are you more confused, Chris?
Yeah, that's actually not what I intended, but it's fine, let's just vote it.
It was supposed to be one, right?
It was supposed to be one, correct?
It was supposed to be one.
Okay. I'm sorry, let me read that one more time. I move that we amend the current budget to reduce the advanced learning investment by eliminating one new FTE position, and for the funding to be reallocated to a financial reserve for further consideration of spending.
Second.
I think it's on the record that that was the secondary position.
Okay, so I'm gonna, Ananda moved it.
Okay.
Nikki second. Discussion? Okay, let's go for a vote. Anika, your...
Aye.
Aye, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Do we got it? All right.
So it failed, correct?
It failed.
Sorry, couldn't see the other half of the tape.
Okay, so we got another amendment?
I can barely read right now. I move that the special education transition funding and the one FTE LP, leap position be removed, and the funding be reallocated to a financial reserve for further consideration of spending.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion? No discussion on it? Okay.
I'm sorry, can I just ask? Ananda, can you speak to this, this amendment?
So I look, the rationale, again, there's no win in any of those motions, right? Those are, those are really important bodies of work that I believe close to my heart. The intention here was to look at new positions, new bodies of work that are necessarily not fully established, and that was the rationale on this particular new position.
Okay, we ready for a vote?
Yeah.
Ali, did you get your?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
Those in favor?
Aye.
I said aye, I didn't know if it was heard though.
Maybe we should raise our hands.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
Aye, thank you.
Motion failed?
No.
It did pass. Okay. All right, next amendment, you got another?
I move that, I move that we reduce the mental health expansion by removing the ninth-grade C-bits investment, and for the funding to be reallocated to a financial reserve for further consideration of spending.
Second.
Discussion?
Can I ask a question to administration on the state funding commentary here? Just, can you kind of play out, if this were to pass right now, what would that mean from us, if the state funding were to change at a later date with respect to mental health? What does that actually enable us to do?
So let me address this from a financial perspective, and Lisa can take the timeline implications. So we do anticipate that we'll get some funding from the state in mental health, based on where negotiations are right now with the state. That's not embedded into this current budget, and that perhaps that funding could be used for the ninth-grade C-bits moving forward. However, there are serious timeline implications with not funding that right now, tonight.
Kelly, before you pass it to Lisa, my understanding is that the state funding will be in the form of grants. Am I wrong about that for mental health?
There's two sets of mental health funding that are currently being discussed at the state level. One is grants, and then the other is a...
And then the other is a mental health reimbursement. And that reimbursement is likely to increase, which would provide a revenue source.
So we're talking about the reimbursement aspect, okay.
It is likely if we wait on the C-bits until fall, that we will not be able to move forward on that this year. It will have to be put off.
I guess if we don't, if we, if we move forward now and the state funding comes through, is there like a flag that can be raised later to say, by the way, guys, there's 100 grand in the budget that we didn't spend?
Yeah, I mean, potentially you could move your funding source.
If we proceed now with, with all haste, and the state were to then fund it or reimburse it.
Yeah, you could change your funding source in October as well. We wouldn't need to make that decision tonight.
Okay, any further discussion? No, okay. Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. All right, motion fails. Anything else?
So I just want to clarify, what just happened with those two amendments puts 285K in a reserve.
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
Between the $100,000 for mental health and the 185?
No, failed.
Failed, oh, okay. So only 185 is in the reserve. I just want to make sure I understand what just happened. And maybe so that everyone else understands what just happened. And the one position, okay.
So the 185 did pass, is in the front, okay.
I thought that failed.
All right, okay, moving on. Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Consent agenda?
Yeah.
No, we gotta, we gotta.
I am so sorry, Gloria, I just want to make sure we're leaving this room, understanding what just happened with these amendments. Based on our count over here, the amendments that did not fail are Nikki's amendment on Simpson Street, and the 185 that removes the special education funding and the leap position. Is that correct?
Correct, the advanced learner motion failed, so there are no cuts to the advanced learners.
Okay, okay.
I thought the advanced learner passed and the leap failed.
It ultimately failed.
Okay, then I did, okay.
It failed twice.
Right, right, right. No, I remember now. Sorry.
Is that cut?
Got it, okay. All right.
All right.
No, sorry. Okay, moving on?
Yeah.
All right. So, let's see here. So since the Simpson Street Free Press amended, passed, amendment passed, it is recommended that the board approve and adopt the 2019-2020 preliminary budget as proposed, in the total amount of 518,848,985 net of inter-fund transfers, inclusive of all funds with said proposed budget having been identified in the document entitled DPI Preliminary Budget Adoption Format dated June 24, 2019.
Second.
Kate, discussion? Okay, Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Now on to our final motion to approve our tax levy under our current preliminary budget. Motion 2C, motion on proposed preliminary budget tax levy. It is recommended that the board approve the preliminary tax levies by fund, with the said levy approvals being one, for the purpose of enabling short-term borrowing by the district during the 2019-2020 fiscal year, and two, subject, subject to modifications by the board prior to November 1, 2019, in conjunction with certified in the final levy amounts based upon the then-current status of the 2019-2020 school district budget, considering such alterations and amendments as may be made prior to levy certification.
Second.
So I just need to finish reading. Okay, so, yep, thank you. Fund 10, general fund, 296,596,893. Fund 38, non-refundum, 5,257,768. Fund 39, referendum, approved debt service, 8,300,900. Fund 41, capital expansion fund, 5 million. Fund 80, community service fund, 11,997,337, with a total of tax levy of 327,152,898. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Are we done?
No, we have the consent.
No, I mean, no, are we done with the budget?
No, but I, you are done with the budget. Can I just take a moment to thank Kelly?
Yes.
Lisa, the entire budget team, who I hope is asleep in their beds right now. And this is Kelly's first budget as the chief financial officer. Can we give her a round of applause? Appreciate you. Thanks, thanks, you guys.
Great job, Kelly, thank you. Yep. All right, moving on to consent agenda.
Need to pull out 10.45.
Okay, it is recommended that the Board of Education adopt and approve all of the motions set forth in Section 10 of the electronic agenda prepared for the June 24, 2019 regular school board meeting, exactly as said motions are written. By voting affirmatively on this motion, a board member expresses his or her affirmative vote on each of the motions consolidated hereby, subject to any express separations that have been made by any member of the school board.
Second.
Discussion? Ananda, and then Chris.
I need a separation.
Okay.
10.43 and 10.44, as it relates to my current place of employment, Department of Public Instruction.
Okay, Chris?
I would also like to separate 10.21 and 10.39. I have 10.43 and 10.44 on my list as well, and I'd like to just discuss them. I could discuss them together to save time.
Sure. And those were 10.21 and 10.39?
And 43 and 44, yep.
Okay. Nikki?
Pull out 10.5 and 10.19.
Any others?
I know it's over two.
Okay, so let's go ahead, and we'll separate 10.43, 10.44, 10.21, 10.39, 10.5, 10.19. And let's vote on the others on the consent agenda. Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Let's go and start with 10.43.
So I could discuss 10.43 and 10.44 together. They are both grants from DPI to look at our literacy curriculum, and the purpose is planning for a new literacy curriculum down the road. I'm fine with new literacy curriculum. I don't have any opposition to these motions. However, I want to know specifically how the board is going to be involved in setting this new literacy curriculum. This is the first we've heard of it, and it looks like we're already piloting a program in our kindergarten classrooms. We have a statutory obligation to both set the course of study in the district and also to evaluate reading curriculum. It's in state law. And so I just want to make sure that the board is going to be engaged in a meaningful way as we move down this road to thinking about not only what curriculum we select, but how we implement it. So just want to put that out there.
Yeah, Lisa, do you want to say a couple words about this? Board policy 3611 governs selection evaluation materials, but Lisa can speak to that process?
Yeah, definitely. So both the grants, Chris, you're right, support both the process and the involvement of stakeholders for the new K-5 literacy adoption. We're following board policy 3611, and the curriculum committee will certainly hold open meetings and follow open meeting laws as required by state statute, and what Matt and I actually talked about that today. And we certainly do have an obligation to notice those open meetings when it is a full curriculum committee that is meeting. Then we will bring the recommendation to the board, as is stated in policy in point number five at the end of our own MMSD policy. And it is a priority in this work to elevate the voices of students, staff, and community members in the work. We think that that's really important. And we're very grateful to have the additional funding to be able to do that.
I'm really glad to hear about all the community engagement and the elevation of student voice. I think that's really important. For the record, I also want to say that statute 118.0154 says that the school, this is a state statute, the school board shall develop reading goals, assess needs relative to those goals, and make an annual evaluation of the reading curriculum of the school district. So we need to be in compliance with state law as well as our own policy.
Okay. Chris, do you want to talk about 10.44?
Oh, that was.
Those were the two together.
10.44 together.
Oh, that was, okay. All right, sorry about that. Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on those two. 10.43, it is recommended that the Board of Education accept a grant in the amount of 47,394 to support a cross-functional team of 18 central office and school-based staff to participate in the Unbounded Summer Standards Institute to be held July 7 through the 13th, 2019.
So moved.
I'm going to do 10.4.
You're going to do them together?
Yeah, let's do it. Or do we have to do them?
I don't think you can.
All right, so moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, Anika, your advisory vote?
I'm aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Which item are we voting right now?
10.43.
Okay, I'm abstaining. Oh, recuse. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So 6.1.
You got it? Okay, and let's go to 10.04.
That's right. And 10.5, I screwed up and selected, sorry.
Okay. 10.44? Yep, all right. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept a mini-grant from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction in the amount of 40,000 to allow the MMSD to engage in a process during the 2019-2020 school year that leads to a recommendation of the spring of 2020 for core literacy program adoption in the K through 5 classrooms. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All right, Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion?
I abstain.
You got it?
I recuse.
All right. Okay, now we're moving on. Nikki, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't do 10.45.
10.5, I had said.
Okay, okay.
And I made, I rescind that.
10.21?
Okay, so 10.21 is $78,000 for securely classroom management software. I have no problem with classroom management software, and I think it's actually really good to give parents some control over devices when they're not being used in school. My concern is that this is an inefficient way to monitor device use in the classroom. We're asking each teacher to monitor all the devices in their classroom, and that's a lot of work. I'm fine with passing this budget expenditure and purchasing the software, but I think we, you know, this is another reason to get the technology plan on the agenda next year, and to maybe reconvene the technology committee to talk about more efficient ways to keep learning and teaching, the technology focused on learning and teaching in our schools, and not just depend on filtering software to do that.
Okay, anything else? All right, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the expenditure of 77,952 to Trey Braun for a two-year subscription for the security student device remote filtering and classroom management system, with funding from 2019-2020 Technical Services Division budget.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
So I recuse again. Thank you.
Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. 10.39?
So 10.39 is the West High School Credit Union alteration. My concern with this is that when we did the credit union alterations at the other high schools, it was paid for by Summit Credit Union, and for this alteration, we're cost-sharing with them. So I'm just kind of wondering why we're paying for Summit Credit Union to improve their facilities in our schools, especially when they have like a captive audience of customers in our schools and can probably afford to do it themselves. I'm also confused as to how this is connected with the Pathways budget, given that it's a much broader, you know, financial literacy is something that everybody does, regardless of whether or not they're in Pathways. So I don't quite understand using Path, are we using Pathways money for this? At West, Pathways is on pause, so that makes it even more confusing to me. So clarification, and also why are, isn't Summit Credit Union just paying for this?
Chad, do you want to take this one? Okay. And I'll, I'll look at the memo.
So, Chris, I don't know where you're getting that Summit's not paying for.
Well, that's the question, but aren't we putting, oh, okay.
Nope. Yeah, Summit covers all of the expense, up to 110,000. So the bids actually came in less than that. And that's been the same agreement that's in place for the other three credit unions. So same, same deal of the other three we put in at the other high schools. Okay?
Thanks, Chad.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, it is recommended that the Board of Education award Forward Construction Group a bid amount of 89,908.59 for credit union alterations at West High School, using the 2019-2020 Building Maintenance Pathways budget. Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, next is 10.5, that was a mistake.
That was an error.
Okay, yep, let's find 10.5. 10.5, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the curricular learning materials purchasing adoptions in the total amount of 1,017,000, is it 130,000, with funding from 2019-2020 curriculum and instruction, CRLM budget?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Unanimous. 10.19?
10.19, the reason I separated it is I brought this up before. It's not I'm against PALS, I just really want a non-verbal learning tool for those individuals who are non-verbal and want to know if we're still looking at a non-verbal assessment tool.
I think that was a question.
That was.
So our comprehensive assessment committee is looking at making a recommendation for kindergarten readiness screener, and will take that into account.
Thank you, because there, there are a lot of kids who, it's not that they're not ready, they just can't speak. That was my only, that's the reason I pulled it.
Thank you, Nikki. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase of PALS assessment licenses through SEESA to purchasing for the 2019-2020 academic year at a cost of 57,600, 57 million, is it?
Yes.
637,050, with funding from the Office of Assessment Administration Local Budget. It is also understood that most of this cost, if not all, will be reimbursed by the state.
Second.
Discussion? Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, yep. All right, we are done with the consent agenda. Moving on to.
Other business.
Other business, there's nothing, so Student Senate?
Yeah, there is three things in other business.
Is there another one? Gloria? Right, the Student Senate, yep. Student Senate, yep. Okay, Student Senate, yep. Here you go.
Okay, didn't know.
Yeah, so Student Senate isn't meeting in the summer, but hopefully we'll start meeting again in August, and then we'll have more for the board then.
Thank you, Anika. Okay, um, other business, um, interim superintendent contract. "It is recommended that the Board of Education approve entering into an employment agreement for the interim superintendent with Jane Bellmore for the period of August 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020 as set forth in the document prepared for the regular Board of Education meeting dated June 24th, 2019."
Second.
So, so moved.
Second.
Discussion? Alright, Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Good job, Madam President.
Alright, um, Verona and Middleton 4K agreements. Um, whereas the Verona School District and the Middleton Cross Plains Area School District have established 4K programs to serve age-eligible students and whereas the Verona and Middleton Cross Plains Area School Districts recognize the potential educational benefits of providing families with options for four-year-old programs as authorized by the Department of Public Instruction to meet the needs of students eligible to participate in 4K programs. It is hereby resolved that pursuant to Section 66.0301 of the Wisconsin statutes of the school boards of the Middleton Cross Plains School District and Verona Area School District agree to establish and maintain it, on a cooperative basis, 4K programs as set forth in the agreements prepared for the June 24th, 2019 regular meeting for the period of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Uh, notice of claim, "It is recommended that the Board of Education disallow a claim for damages and fees said claim having been served upon the MMSD on or about March 4th, 2019 by a student enrolled in the MMSD and a minor under Wisconsin State Section 893.80 and said claim alleging liability based on acts, omissions by MMSD personnel."
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Appointment of 2019-2020 hearing officers, whereas Madison School Board Policy 4045 and Wisconsin State Section 120.13, Parents I, Parents E, provide that the Madison School Board here and after the board may adopt a resolution in which the board may authorize the use of an independent hearing officer appointed by the board to determine pupil expulsion from school and whereas such resolution is only effective during the school year it is adopted. And whereas the school board desires to adopt such resolution and use independent hearing officers to determine pupil expulsion from school for the 2019-2020 school year, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the use of an independent hearing officer for the 2019-2020 school year to determine a pupil's expulsion from school and be it further resolved that the following independent hearing examiner shall be appointed, uh, to the pool of examiners. Date, David Friedman and Allison Markowski.
Second.
Discussion? Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Regular meeting dates for 2019-2020 school year, "It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Mondays for holding the regular board meetings at 6:00 PM over the 2019-2020 school year." So, um, 2019, we got July 21st, August 26th, September 23rd, October 28th, November 25th, December 16th. For 2020, we have January 27th, February 24th, March 23rd, April 27th, May 18th, and June 22nd.
Second.
Any discussion? Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Summer 2019, we're almost done, guys. 2019 Board of Education meeting schedule. "It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following dates for summer 2019 meetings, July 8th, special meeting, July 15th, operations work group, August 5th, instruction work group, August 12th, special meeting, August 12th, instruction work group, and August 19th, special meeting." Okay, discussion? Anika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Old and new business, there's nothing. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all. We passed the budget. Yes.